Thanking everybody and welcome to this regular Planning Board meeting on October 27, 2022. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Katta?
Here.
Mr. Lilly?
Here.
Mr. Heineman?
Here.
Mr. Camuti? Mr. Deold? Councilman McAvoy?
Here.
Mr. Neil? Mayor Roman?
Here.
Vice Chairman Fresky?
Here.
Chair Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Masara?
Here.
And also present is John Jar from Brightview Engineering.
The agenda and notice of this meeting has been posted 48 hours in advance of the public meeting on the bulletin board designated for this purpose located in the lobby of the municipal building at 600 Field Avenue, Verona, New Jersey. The agenda and notice of this meeting has been faxed or electronically transmitted to two newspapers circulating within the township as required by statute in order so that the public may be informed 48 hours in advance of the public meeting. At this time, if there's any member of the public that has any comment or question about something that is not on this evening's agenda, please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item E, Approval of Meeting Minutes. Has everybody received all of the meeting minutes? Any corrections that you might want to state for the meeting minutes on August 25? Can we do these all together?
Sure.
Okay. Any corrections on the August 25 meeting minutes? Or comments on September 13? On the meeting minutes from September 22? And finally, on the meeting minutes from September 29? Altogether, would somebody like to, somebody that was at all four meetings, preferably, does anybody need to abstain from any of the meeting minutes, from any of the particular dates for having?
Yes. Madam Clerk, I'm going to abstain from August 25 because of ordinance re-
I don't know, who am I, Madam Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair. Ordinance review of 2022-27.
Okay.
I also have to abstain from the 25th, I was not there.
From August 25?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the same for myself, I was not there.
August 25?
That's correct.
So Mr. Lilly will be abstaining from the 25th? Mr. Heineman? And Councilman McAvoy is abstaining from the entire meeting or just a portion of that?
From the ordinance review of 2022-27.
Okay.
Oh, also 9/13, I was not at that one either.
All right. So September, August 25 and September 13 for Mr. Heineman. Which was the meeting that you're abst-
August 25 I am abstaining from.
Okay, then I'll abstain from that as well. Because that was where the-
Yes.
Review happened. Okay. So with that, we're going to just take general eyes. With the extensions noted?
From someone who's-
A motion, I think I was at all of them.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair and seconded by the Mayor. All members?
Aye.
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 With the extensions noted. Has everybody received the resolution adopting, Resolution 2022-11, adopting the 2022 Master Plan? Does anybody have any comments or questions about the resolution? Would somebody like to move that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilman McAvoy moves, Mr. Heineman seconds. Is this roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair Pearson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Fresky?
Approved.
Mayor Roman?
Approved.
Mr. Neil not here. Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Deold?
Yes.
And Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Before we continue the application for One Sunset Block 303 Lot 1 in Verona, I just want to address a couple of things. A couple of Planning Board members wanted to go visit One Sunset and wanted to go to the site. And I don't know, maybe Ashley, you can help me out with this, but there is a way to get a Verona Planning Board ID, a picture ID that states that you are on the planning board? You can go to Town Hall, do you have to schedule that?
So it would be with police records, they would be able to give you a township ID? I don't think you have to schedule it, but-
Okay. So, you know, for this site or any site in the future, if somebody wants to know why you're on their property, you can flash your card. I just think it's kind of a handy thing to have. Yeah. And I mean, I certainly wouldn't go to a school during school days or school hours, but for anyone who's interested, please go to the Police Department. With that, oh yeah, and one last thing, I just, for the record, want to point, I want everyone to perhaps take a second read of Chapter 430 in Verona's General Ordinances, which is our Site Plan Review Design Requirements and Standards of Review for the Verona Planning Board. And I just want to point out that some of the questions that were being asked at the last meeting are well within the right of the Planning Board to ask, including but not limited to the stages of development, which would include site preparation, removal of dirt, rock, natural resources from the site. All of these standards, all of these are standards of review within our Site Plan Review ordinance and fall under the capability of us to ask whether or not the applicant wants to answer is a whole nother thing. Also, the adequacy of sewerage, that's in 430-17, Letter O. So I just, those questions are within our right to ask, and I just wanted to point that out. I know I wasn't coming out of Leftfield for no reason. I think I had read that a million times, and I just didn't realize that's why I asked those questions, that's why some others might have asked their questions. So please take a read of that as we move through this process. And at that, I hand this meeting back over to Mr. Inglesino, welcome, Mr. Inglesino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Figure this out. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board. Once again, my name is John Inglesino, partner with law firm Inglesino Webster located in Precipity. We're representing the applicant, Verona Sunset Urban Renewal LLC, in regard to this application for preliminary and final site plan approval regarding property located at One Sunset Avenue here in Verona. As you recall, the project consists of a 200-unit multifamily inclusionary project with 185 market rate units, 15 affordable units, and we're here as the result of a Mount Royal Affordable Housing Settlement. Our first meeting was August 25, we had our first evening of testimony on September 22. We heard from the project engineer, Sean Savage, and from the project architect, Jack Raker. Mr. Savage concluded his testimony in questioning, there were few open questions for him, which he is here tonight to address. Mr. Raker also concluded his testimony and was fielding questions when the evening came to a close. So tonight, we'll continue with Mr. Raker's testimony and questions of him. Mr. Savage can then address a few questions that are in his domain, and then Mr. Jonathan Schwartz, who is the principal of the applicant, can address operations questions that have arisen, and certainly if there are other operations questions, Mr. Schwartz would be happy to address those. We then have our traffic expert, Max Sekler, who will testify relative to traffic issues. We understand that the report submission was only recently made, and your traffic expert will be here at the next meeting, but we'll get the, we'll get at least Mr. Sekler's testimony in, so it's there, and then at the next meeting, your expert will be able to ask questions and so forth. As previously stated, we'll address stormwater and green infrastructure after traffic at a subsequent meeting. So Madam Chair, having said all of that, I'd like to call back Mr. Raker, if I may.
Mr. Inglesino, excuse me, one second. Let's see if we get to traffic, because we're not sure that the Board members and Mr. Raker has had ample opportunity to do a complete review. So let's see when we get there, whether it would be advisable to go forward on that. I know some Board members had suggested that having received the report only on Tuesday, today being Thursday, and it is quite a different report from what was originally submitted. So let's discuss that when we get there.
And by the way, Mr. Sekler is going to come back anyway.
Well, right.
In terms of just getting the testimony into the record, he'll be back, so he'll take questions from Board members.
I mean, I'll leave that obviously up to the Board.
Yeah, your experts at a later date as well, but-
Mr. Inglesino, please try to give us a little more lead time. This is, my fear is that you're going to throw site plans, stormwater at us a week before Thanksgiving and go, we're going to hear this on the first. And I just, I got to tell you, we have a lot of people that review plans, and the coordination of those types of things takes quite, quite a bit of time.
Sure, I understand.
So we're getting a whole new site plan, a whole new 400-page stormwater management report, and a whole new landscape management plan. We're going to need ample time to review. It can't just be, we're going to testify and we'll be back. You know, like with something like that, I really ask for a bit more patience-
Sure.
-from the township and this Board.
Understood. At this time, Mr. Raker, you understand you're still-
Can you state his name for me?
Jack Raker, R-A-K-E-R.
And Mr. Raker, you understand that you're still under oath in this proceeding, is that correct?
That's correct.
And your license is still in effect, and there have been no changes to your professional credential that you testified to at the last meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Raker, why don't you address some of the questions-
Could you have him turn his microphone on?
You've got a press-
For the record, also, did you see Mr. Deold walk in a couple of minutes ago? Thank you.
Lou? Okay. Okay, I'm going to, there were a couple of questions that were asked last time, and I brought in some exhibits to address a couple of the questions. The first one that was asked was the location of the low and moderate units. So I brought in the exhibits and I highlighted the locations. They are labeled on the plans, although there's no notation telling you what they were. They were labeled with a dash A after the plan, but I've highlighted them on the plan for you, and I'm going to just walk you through each level and show you the locations of the low and moderate units.
I believe a couple of Board members had also asked for the floor plan for the low-cost units versus, and especially in comparison to the regularly priced units. Did you bring that data in for us? You said you would.
I, yes, I did. I don't know that I have the floor plan for the three-bedroom unit, I can show you the floor plan for the other units. And I can always bring back the floor plan and show that to you.
Can, can those items be forwarded to the Board Secretary so that-
Well, they're going to be exhibited.
Sure, they're going to be exhibited, so they're going to have to-
The Board members will have a chance to take a look at them so that they actually could see if they even have more questions? That's all. I think it would be best if they were also forwarded to us-
Absolutely.
...in PDF format. Thank you.
So this is the ground floor plan, first plan of the, of that portion of the building that highlighted the unit in, it's hard to see on the screen, I'm sorry for the, I guess it's the lighting, but it's the unit that has a slight green tinge to it, it is, I can point to it. This is Sheet AO2 of our submitted set, a colorized version of that, but that's the location of a two-bedroom affordable unit. Oh, thank you.
Floor is there?
This is the ground floor. Again, you can see in other, these are, there's a two-bedroom unit here, and these are one-bedroom units here. We have affordable units on all floors. We do like units to stack, by the way, just so that the bathroom layouts, the plumbing, everything stacks and you get these lines that come down through the building. We generally don't like to shift units from one location to another as the design changes. Next level up, you can see these units are stacking and additional units are here. This is an at-grade unit for this level, this is the open plaza area, so these units get terraces on the plaza. Again, you're going to see them stack up through the building, these units, they are one-bedroom units, and this is a two-bedroom unit. And this is a three-bedroom unit, now this unit is at the upper levels, you can see it gets exposure on the alternate sides. And it stays stacking in that location until it reaches the uppermost level. And the roof. So those are the locations of the affordable units. Again, they are, they are labeled on the submitted plans with the letter A, so if you are looking for them in your set, just look for the A that's next to the, next to the unit, and you'll see the unit there. Another question that was generated was, there was a blank portion of our, of our facade wall that was asked for some articulation and some change. That wall is now back here, before it was shown as a facade, just a blank facade wall, it's back, you really won't see this from the street. I'll show you perspective view from Afterglow Avenue, you'll see that you don't see that just because of the perspective, it's so far back, the building's forward, and it blocks the view of that wall. But what we've done here is, there are no windows in this wall, it is a firewall, so we can't put, we can't put openings in it, but what we can do is create that, that rhythm, the same rhythm, and break up that facade using color, different color Hardy panel to mimic what's happening at the lower levels.
Is that, I'm sorry-
Is that the garage wall that's going to be facing Afterglow?
So this, this, this is the garage, as the ramp ramps up, you'll see that, I'm going to show you a perspective view from Afterglow, so you'll see, you don't really see any of that, just because the building is out in front and it blocks your view. But this is the garage wall, you know, let me show you in plan what you're looking at, that might be easier. So what you're seeing in that perspective, this is Sheet AO9 of the submitted set, it's the, it's called a roof plan. The, what, the wall that was asked for us to change was the wall right here, it's the edge of this building here. The garage is here, it's not at this roof level, it's actually a few levels below, but that gray area that you're seeing is this garage wall that's here. When you're on Afterglow, this building is further, far enough forward, and you're down on Afterglow, you don't see either this wall or this wall from that perspective vantage point.
Isn't that lower building with the residencies only a three-story or a four-story versus the garage which goes up six? Am I mistaken?
No, this, that, this, this portion is four stories.
Uh-huh.
And this portion, it doesn't have a roof, remember? So it does go up five stories, but it doesn't have a roof. So it pokes up above a little bit because of ramp, when you look at a parking garage, it goes up half-level, 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 and then it pokes up another, when you go back to that elevation view. So you can see, this is the garage, it lands, this end of the building is right at roof level, and then it ramps up here to this level here. So it sits up just above, this is a four-story portion, and this sits up above that, but because of its proximity to this, this facade, when you're on Afterglow, you don't see this or even this. And I'll show you a perspective, we took a perspective view from Afterglow from that vantage point. And I am, another slide I'm going to show everyone is the improved perspectives with Again, you can see from this vantage point, you can see that garage in the background, that portion, the other building that's sticking up in the background, but this is four stories, this is four stories. This one does have a basement level. Going a little way. So here's the perspective view from the entry with the correct landscaping. We worked with the landscape architect to get the correct species, provide them at the, at an approximate height, mid-growth, it's actually early growth. We work with the landscape architect, it's not planted height, which most of the, at least the evergreens that we're showing are like eight to 10 feet, these are probably shown at about 14 to 15 feet. So we did show with a little bit of maturity, but my understanding is some of them will get upwards of 25 to 60 feet, so we're definitely shooting low here on maybe like a few years of growth. But, you know, don't ask me questions about landscaping, we will have the landscape architect come, and these perspectives will be available if you want to ask very particular questions about the landscaping. So you can see the trees that now block some of the lower portions of the building have been added here, some of the evergreen that is in this area is, has been blocked, blocks the view of the entry, and you can see some of the low growth here blocks the view, blocks the view of that, that entry circle. This view is the view from Afterglow. So you're seeing essentially mature trees, we took these trees from a photograph that we have, then we blended in the added greenery that we were adding. A lot of this growth over here is added, some of these trees are shown definitely at their, you know, they've only been growing for a couple of years, they'll grow in to be much taller, and there are definitely some of the evergreens that have been planted in this area here to fill in some of that lower areas.
But I'm sorry, I just, I was wondering if we're looking at the architecture and the trees, so I'm just trying to understand the-
Well, I, last time I brought drawings that removed the trees so we could look at the architecture, now we're showing the trees, I-
I want it both ways.
Okay. But you can see here, so what we see here is the roof of the building, this is the roof of that four-story portion. And because that, that portion is so much further in front of you, you can't see over it to the buildings that are beyond it. And then the last one, we did a winter shot, so we took away some of that growth, we left some of the lower growth evergreens that are here. So these are, these are all plantings that we are going to be adding, these lower green plantings, and they'll fill in and grow, from what I understand, upwards of 50 to 60 feet. I, I don't, I don't want to, I'm going to let these landscape architects speak to the specifics, but, you know, I worked with her and asked her these questions because I knew if I presented this, I would get that question.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah, please.
Just, just to confirm what we're getting at here, are you saying that the top drawing on A10, where we do see that blank wall, you, the applicant plans to improve the appearance of that wall regardless?
Regardless, absolutely. It does, you know, people are going to be up on that parking garage level, and likely, we didn't show it on these renderings, we would have likely done that when we were doing construction documentation anyway.
Okay.
So I believe I've answered except for the layout of the three-bedroom unit, I have answered most of the questions that were asked the last time. I know there were some very specific questions as to excavation grading, I'd like those to be restated if you don't mind, because they were, there were specific areas that were asked, and I, you know, I didn't have that information in front of me at that time, but I've placed it on these plans so I can answer questions with regards to excavation.
Yeah, if you want to answer some of those, first off, there was a question, you, you did say one of the other buildings does have a basement. So somebody had asked at the last meeting what the elevation of the basement puddings are, or what the elevation of that basement is, and see, we want to understand it in comparison to what we have before us, because I remember last meeting, you said, you know, this building is going to be stepped into the-
It is, it is, yes.
That, that might be the case, that there's going to be a great deal of that ground removed, and I just don't think that it's easy for us to understand, it would be great if you had sort of the current property and then an overlay of how that building will be, here's the hill, this is, you know, the, the level at which we start to see the school, and here's where you're actually going to see the first floor of the building in that same spot.
If you'd like, I could walk you through these plans, and I could speak to them now a little bit more specifically about floor heights and some grading in the surrounding area if you'd like, if that would help.
If you could-
Madam Chair?
If you could also compare it to the grade of the actual point on the site that we have today versus what we're going to have in the future at those particular spots, that would be very helpful for our understanding. Go ahead, Councilman McAvoy.
Just on the topic of grading, soil removal, et cetera, I'd specifically also like to focus on the swimming pool and, you know, intended depth and constructability of that, what it's going to take to actually get that in there, because we know that that entire hill is basically rock under there.
Sure. The, the pool depth would be generally four feet, we don't usually make them any deeper. And actually, we usually do a shallow end that's only about a one foot deep, so you can put like a lounge chair in it and relax in a lounge chair, so a portion of the pool will likely be one foot deep, and then the remainder would be about four feet deep. There's no like diving end or anything like that in these pools. And I, and I believe, and I'm going to, I'm going to look through the grading as we go through here, I believe a portion of that area is filled, so it's, portion is cut and a portion is filled, so there's somewhat of a balance that's going on in those courtyards.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Raker, my concern, my main concern, I asked a question last meeting, was mainly along the ridge line, mainly the southeast corner of this development, and how the close proximity of the corner of the building to where, no, the, further, yeah, right there.
Here.
Okay. The proximity to how close to where the cliff drops off.
Sure.
And if you're digging down six feet, eight feet, my concern is how far down that mountain is that footing level? And if you're blasting at that level, do you compromise that hill behind it? And I made reference to what went on in West Orange last year, behind the field, on the hill there where it collapsed years later, not so much during construction, but I want your assurance that, you know, that's not going to happen here.
Well, I, I can assure you that that level is a slab on grade, so I'm going to walk you up through, to that level, and I'll explain to you what we're doing. So you, you can see there's, there's, there's two courtyards here, and then a grade out here. This is elevation 541. Essentially, it's the elevation out in front of the circle. You'll enter here at 541.
I'm sorry, I am going to interrupt because I want to know what that elevation is now versus what it's going to be. So before and after is basically, so that we have an understanding of how the elevation and the landscape on this site are going to change. So I'm not just asking for what your proposed is, I'm asking for what it is and what it will be.
Okay. I, I can tell you, the person who developed the, I was the one who developed these plans. As I developed the plans, I would look at the natural grade and set my, my building and work my building, in other words, where the units would move in the building would work with the natural grade. Can I speak to the, I, I, I don't have a grading plan in front of me to speak to the existing grade of, of what's going on in the circle, so- So I apologize, I can't answer it. I can tell you that on this end, it's more natural grade as to what is, exists right now. This end, where I believe we're filling and building a small retaining wall, it's because grade comes up and we want this circle to be relatively flat. We've graded it such that we're digging a little bit on this end and then we're filling a little bit on this end. And, you know, trucking off dirt and excavating rock is not an inexpensive proposition. And, you know, we don't want to do it. And we want to develop in a, in a very environmentally sound way.
Raker, the applicant did submit a topographic survey of the site. So if you're able to pull that up, I'm wondering if that might be helpful if we select certain areas on the, on the property and compare the intended grade versus what is found in the survey.
Is the last sheet, is the last sheet submitted by Stonefield?
I can bring up the grading plan.
It would be great if you could do an overlay.
Well, he's got the grading, the grading plan, which should actually.
With the building.
But we don't know where the building sits within that actual grading plan unless it's scaled in, you know what I mean?
He's going to have to kind of walk us through it.
Yes.
So I'm going to speak, show you what you're looking at here. But these, these lines, these lighter gray lines, those are existing topography lines, these light dashed lines. These darker solid lines are where we're manipulating the grade. So, you know, you could see the engineers sort of turn some of these to create a curve and to set this ramp length, the slope on this entry drive by manipulating some of the grade, which means we're going to be disturbing some of the soil in here at the entry and setting it so that we can get to a grade that we want. But you can, what you notice is that you have existing grades and then you, we're always tying into those existing grades. We're not just slashing, cutting, leveling the site. And you'd see a lot more darker lines if we did that. I'm going to zoom out a little bit just so you can see a little bit more of the overall site. And, you know, if you need the engineer to come up and speak a little bit more expertly about this, I'm just going to give you the layman's understanding, which is what I use to design the building.
A little bit closer.
Sorry about that. Usually I have my mouse. There we go. So you can see in this area between the, you're seeing a lot of darker lines, we're manipulating the grade. I believe we had to make an accessible route. So that's important to make sure that the grades work so that works for someone that requires an accessible route. And then you can see there's not a lot of dark lines in this area at this end, which means we're leaving that grade for the most part where it is. But you can see some darker lines down here and this retaining wall to sort of flatten out this entry circle. So this circle is flat, but grade is sloping out down toward the road. So it's lower out here, there's a retaining wall here, and this area is relatively flat. And then you could see that all of these very short lines back here is a grade disturbance so that we can tie these grades into the existing grade. There's no, you're not seeing excavation in this plan. You're not seeing, you know, the depth that we're digging. But I can walk you through certain points that are of interest as I go around my plan, where we get exposure and where we don't.
So the area you just highlighted, isn't that, isn't that mostly rock? So how do you, how do you regrade on top of that?
This area over here?
I think it's the east, yeah.
Yeah, there is actually, from what I understand, there is some rock in here. We do have a retaining wall. We want to hide the, the area where we're doing the loading and trash. So we do have a retaining wall in that area. But I don't, the engineer can speak to the amount of excavation that we're doing there. There is a retaining wall. I'm not sure of the height. Maybe if I zoom in, I can, I can get that number for you.
What sheet are we looking at right now?
Hold on one second, I'll get you that. It is. My eyes are bad, I apologize. I think it's six of 15.
Thank you.
And it is the grading and drainage plan. So one thing I do want to point out is that these lines are very short. And when they're short, that means we're not manipulating a lot of grade. They're, they're just tying, we're just moving enough to tie into the grade that's very close to, to, to the existing grade. And I'm just going to point out a couple of features. You can see that we've, you know, sort of manipulated grade over here by the garage and that's essentially creating a swell because of our stormwater.
Are you giving us the elevations of, not yet?
No, I, I could do that with my plan. And what I plan to do, Madam Chair, is to go through the levels, the floor levels of my plan and then the relative grade levels outside of that floor level. Just so you have an understanding of where grade, because the building steps up the hill, it's very difficult to see where grade is as we step up the hill. So I, I put some spot elevations on the plan and I want, I could walk you through the plan and give you specific spot elevations for where grade is. But this, what this grading plan shows is that we're not manipulating, other than our excavation, we're not manipulating grade a lot. The lines are very short to tie back into existing grade. It's not like we're creating these long lines to get all the way back, which means we're cutting a lot more, we're filling a lot more. They're very short. I'm going to go back to my presentation and take you through the four levels and hopefully it'll make it a little clearer as I go up through the four levels. So one thing I want to say about the garage, so the garage at this level, this is elevation 530, this is where you enter the garage. This circle is at approximately elevation 530. It's up and down six inches here or there, but it's approximately that same elevation. So as you pull up here, it's level with this entry and it's level with this garage. This half of the garage where you enter is level with the floor. This half of the garage on this side is half, it's midway between the floor level and the level above. So what that means is I have to create an accessible route from this side. I create a stair. I have what's called a split stop elevator, which means you go in one side at one level, it goes up a half level and then you exit out the other side. So that allows you, that gives me the accessible route from this side of the garage into the building. There is nothing, all this, this is just ghosting, this white area and these, right now, that's just ghosting. That's actually just dirt right now. We're just showing you the form of the building of what's, what's to come on the upper levels. So this is elevation 530. I'm going to zoom in a little here. This elevation out here is 535, but this is about 535 and a half. Because remember, this garage ramps up half the distance, there's approximately 11 feet between one floor to the next. So the garage steps up five and a half feet, then it goes up another five and a half feet and where on this side, it matches the floor level of the building. So the grade is coming up on this side, natural grade or, I would say, natural grade. We're actually creating a swell here, so we are creating a natural path for water. We can't let water drain onto our neighbor's property, so we do have to make sure that it does drain onto ours and we have our stormwater under the garage. And the engineer will go over all those details, most of which I don't fully understand. But this is, this elevation is approximately the same elevation as this garage level here.
I'm just looking at the sheet that you told me to look at and it appears that the elevations outside of that garage wall range from 541 to 558, 559 on the side of the gas room up to 560.
Correct. But again, Madam Chair, there is no construction happening here. That's just dirt right now. It's, the constructions happen here. And actually, this is our greatest point of excavation.
But I'm looking at the, I see that the elevation line carries right to the corner of the building. So you're saying it's going to be 535, 540 there and I see 560?
Right here, where my, my laser is pointing, it's about 535.
Okay, and the sheet that you told me to look at shows that the elevations are around 555 there. So that's 20, 20-foot difference in elevation?
Oh, no, I stand corrected, you are correct. It's 555. And I, and I apologize, that's probably why you shouldn't have an architect talk about grading. But this is our area of deepest excavation. This is where we'll, this is where we'll be cutting into the earth the most to get this corner of the garage. And so you'll, this is where you'll see the greatest amount of disturbance and excavation.
Where?
Right in this corner of the garage. We have to put this stair and this elevator in, in this corner of the garage. This garage is at 535 and a half and this is at 555.
So there will be a 20-foot elevation change in that corner or?
In this corner, we're excavating 20 feet down to get the garage to work. Now we've ramped up and ramped into here and we continue to go up. So as we go up, that grade, you know, that lessens. But again, if you look here, we're not, we're not, this is a white, showing is white. There is no building here. So we're not disturbing any of the soil here. It's just, just this element where you're seeing the color.
But you can't leave a big drop-off like that from the building. So there will have to be some sort of smooth, smoothing, you can't just go from.
No, this can be, this is essentially, and that's the beauty of the, the way the building steps up the hill, it becomes a retaining wall.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So that the inside will have an elevation of 535 at the outside.
Correct.
The soil will reach a 555, a 20-foot differential.
Correct, correct. So the build, this is what makes this somewhat environmentally sound, that the building essentially, we're not, we're not flattening in the building retaining wall. It's not like we put our, you know, our building on top of this, you know, mountain. We're letting the building step and we are excavating, but we're also filling in areas that our building floor is above the, the natural grade. So we're trying to create a balance.
What about the second building that kind of ends up behind that?
Let me just.
Are those, which, which building will have the basement? How about that?
Okay, it is, I'll tell you, I'll point it out, it's this building that gets the basement.
Okay.
And it is just this wing over here. I'm sorry? Let me, let me zoom out a little bit because, I apologize, zooming out is not as easy without a mouse. So the basement is actually right in this area here. It's just this half of this leg. Because there is amount of, there's a considerable amount of topography that happens from here all the way to here. And we'll step the building and you'll see as it goes up that this portion will exist before this upper portion exists. I'll take you through to the next slide. We just hit that, that first level. So I pointed out, this is our deepest area of excavation, I believe, and it's about 20 feet. And there may be, you know, there may be some existing grades that are higher that maybe push that up a foot or two under the building. I'd have to look and check that, but this is what we anticipate to be the deepest excavation.
And just that back corner on the same side of the garage in the far back, the elevation of the first floor of that?
This, this right here?
No.
This?
No, I'm, I think I'm all the way, yes, over there. That back corner?
Yes, I'll, I'll get to that as we get up to those levels. I'm going to, I'm going to like walk you through each level, talk about adjacent grades around each level. It steps up quite a few times, so. This is the next level up and this is at elevation 541. I'm just going to zoom in here because my eyes are poor and I do need to see some of these grades that I thought were large enough but are not. So we have an elevation, whoops, back. Now I want you to notice that this portion of the building exists here, but this is still white, which means essentially this is still dirt right now. All of this white area is dirt. You have this, any wall that you see on this side adjacent to the white is excavation and a retaining wall. So this, we have the next level up, it's now retaining another level of dirt back in here. And I think actually portions of this were filling behind this wall because it doesn't need, it doesn't quite come up to the next level above. And then portions of, over here, we're excavating. So we're splitting that level, this next, this next level up, we're going to split that level with this terrace. Are there any questions about existing grade at this level? I can, if not, I'll, I'll move on to the next. We have an existing grade of 541 here and that's, that's where this unit exists. We can't put this unit in because grade is too high back here. And it would bury the windows and bury the portions of the, of the wall in that unit. So I'm going to zoom out a little bit here so you can see the entirety of this next floor. So now we have exposure to this courtyard. This courtyard is at 552. Grade down here is about 541, but grade up over here is around 552. So this corner of the courtyard meets, meets the grade. This portion of the courtyard is above grade. This, this area over here is above grade. So we've filled this to make it somewhat level in this area and these units are at grade and are at this level. Here, this portion of the building is still retaining. These are retaining the dirt beyond. We haven't, this, we haven't gotten to this courtyard yet. So this area here, right in here, there's a firewall right in this area of the building. This section is the basement of the next building above. It's just this tiny area here. And that would be considered the basement of the building above. Again, we step up. Now we're at the main level, the main level of the amenity deck. This is elevation 563.
Where?
Pool, 563. So this plaza is at 563. These units all look onto this plaza. And these units here all look out onto this plaza, which is at 563. This is still dirt. We have not put a footing in here yet. The building is still stepping and retaining at this all, at this edge, this wall.
So, so all those units there, that, that, all the bedroom windows will be on the courtyard?
Correct. That's, that's correct. These walls, these walls will be looking out into this courtyard. This hallway, it couldn't get windows on this side because it's, it's retaining the dirt beyond.
Or the east side? The east side there also has a, is that a retaining wall there?
Correct. This side here is a retaining wall.
And then on the, to the, there.
And then here and here is retaining. Holding that dirt back. Now, you know, portions of it will be filled, portions of it will be. Now, you know, portions of it will be filled, portions of it will be excavated because we have another level that's gonna go up here, which ends up being three stories above grade, right here. This portion of the building is only three stories above grade.
If I may, a general question on these walls? And if this is structural engineering, please feel free to say so. How deep do you feel that the footings on these walls might need to be excavated?
Our, our footings are typically three feet deep.
Okay.
Okay, that's just for frost and heave. But typically what happens on some of the retaining walls, because it's in the building and against the building, you don't have to go three feet deep. The earth under the building won't reach frost level. Some engineers might just put them very shallow. I can't speak to what, you know, what our engineer will choose to do. They'll, they'll make their decision once they understand the geology.
The, the reason why I'm asking is, the way that you're describing these walls, which sound like they're both structural walls of the building and retaining walls from bearing soil on the back of them. I'm assuming that they're going to be fairly sturdy structural walls. I'm assuming probably, are they poured concrete?
Absolutely, most likely they'll be poured concrete.
Poured concrete, okay. And that's where I'm kind of asking the question is, if you've got a poured concrete wall that's intended to hold back soil behind it, I don't know how you'd put that on the grade without digging a fairly deep footing in order to make it structurally stable.
Absolutely right. So, well, yeah, I mean, there, obviously, it needs to, it, it has some sort of force that wants to push it over. So again, the structural engineer will, will design the wall to handle any forces that are behind it. And, you know, this method is, it's a very economical way to build because rather than build a bunch of freestanding structural retaining walls and then flatten your building and just build on top of a nice flat site, you're just integrating your retaining walls into your foundations that you're already building.
Right. And as you explain this, I, I appreciate, I know it, it does appear that a lot of effort went into doing this to, to make it work. I'm just trying to understand how it's actually going to get built and what, what the effects are going to be as to, you know, as to the construction process.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now, the, the last, the last level that touches grade, you'll see, is, is this left, leftover L-shaped portion that is up at the next elevation, which is, I believe, 574. 574, and our hot, our, the grade that touches the building is 574, and that's at this corner. The grade down here was at the previous grade, 563. And if you look at the grading plan, I think you're seeing numbers of around 570 in here. I have it in my notes, I'll just have to zoom. 564.
On that?
Yeah, so you can see here, I've, I've noted some of those grades, 564, 563, 562, which is, the plaza is set at 563. The units below these units all front out to that plaza. But you can see the grades, this is 568, 564, and it goes all the way up to the grade at 574, which is this floor level. So I hope that allows you to understand the building and how it steps up the hill and how we've kept the footings shallow where needed. We do have to excavate. The parking is required. We have to excavate to make sure that the parking reaches all those depths. And that's, that's where our greatest point of excavation is gonna be.
Can you just address the amenities and the electrical area that sort of on the, that juts into sort of the corner of Bloomfield and, or goes towards the corner of Bloomfield and, sorry, Bloomfield and Sunset? So you have the...
These amenities in this area?
Sort of a co-working amenity, a sprinkler, electrical gas, all, all the...
Let me go down to that level.
Oh, wait, you haven't gotten to that yet, have you?
Oh, I, I, no, actually, I have.
Ah, okay, let's, let's let you do your thing.
This is the level you're looking for?
Yeah, over that way, though.
This is the area where we, oh, you, you, this area here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me get, let me go back. That's actually down at the, at the first level. So this is where, this is where, in my testimony previously, we testified, this is, we have a second hallway here that accesses...
Can you slide that over a little, or, does your building end at the end of that piece of paper?
You know what, I'll zoom in. That way you can see. I'll just zoom into that area. That way we can look at it a little bit closer. So here we're showing a domestic water room. We have electric meters, gas meters, move in and move out.
Yep.
And then a variety of utility spaces here as well. So, you know, this is where we said, we do have to ramp this a little bit just so that we can hit grade out here. So you can see we do create a ramp in this hallway. And that allows us to bring, move-ins would come in, we track down here, they would be, go up these elevators. We also have our trash room, which is at this level, but all of our trash terminates in, it's a very large trash room. We manage trash there. It is brought down this utility hallway, and it goes again out this move-in, move-out at the time of pickup.
I guess my question on that side of the building with elevations, are the elevations in that area on, along that side of the building, even though it's...
Yeah, let me, let me describe what's happening here. So we have 541 on the corner of the building. So a lot of this is below grade. We have a retaining wall, I believe it's right in this area here, or is it? Let me just...
So you're, you're going to go below grade? You're gonna excavate that area and go...
Right, so we are gonna, we're, we're gonna dig down, this is not, we have an elevation of 541, and this is at 530. I believe we come up a little bit from the, from the ramping standpoint, but it's gonna be approximately 10 feet of excavation in that corner. The grade is up around here, and then we have a retaining wall, I believe, right here so that move-ins can happen at that level. That concludes my testimony. So any questions that the board may have?
Did, did you have pictures that you could show us of the floor plans, even if it's a two-bedroom unit?
Sure, sure.
And can you put it side by side by a regular price unit just so that people have an understanding of what the differences are?
I'm gonna have to zoom out a little. Yeah, you know, and Madam Chair, I apologize, I, I don't have a low and moderate unit in my plans.
Can you, can you please get us...
I will absolutely promise, I will bring them and submit them to the board prior to the next hearing so you have them to review and you can ask me questions.
Mr. Rager, question about elevators. Is it, do I see three areas here that the elevators are?
I believe so, yeah, there's, there's, hold on, I'm gonna just...
Two in the center and then one in that corner.
Two to the page. Yes, so we, we see this is more of a primary area, so we have two elevators here, and we have one elevator here.
And appropriate size, which size are they?
They're 3,500-pound elevators. They fit a stretcher.
Like, that's what I'm thinking for EMS?
Yes, the, the stretcher can fit in, in, in these elevators. The building code requires me to do that. The building is, is fully accessible as well, so there's no unit that's not adaptable.
And the nice thing about a building like...
The nice thing about a building like this is that you have the garage to circulate to your level. So let, let's say you're an older person and, and you don't wanna, even taking an elevator, especially if you're carrying groceries, can be a bit of a pain. You can park at your level and have a unit at your level and just walk. Park your car, park in, if you're, if you have a disability, the accessible spaces are all right near the elevators and the entries. Park there and walk directly from that parking spot into your unit.
I only, I only ask because I know we got older buildings in town that don't have a properly sized elevator. And I'm more worried about, obviously, they can't bring in ambulants in the parking garage. They're gonna have to access the elevators to get up and down.
And I believe by standard, we do nine-foot cabs. I know you can talk to my client, he, when he speaks operations, but by, normal-sized elevator is a nine-foot cab, so it has, it's taller as well. You know, there's a lot of move-ins and move-outs, furniture being moved around. And if it's a small cab, it gets beaten up pretty badly.
Is a backup generator proposed for this building?
Yes, we do anticipate a generator being proposed. We'll probably put it right on the garage at the upper level.
That was my next question, is if you have the proposed location.
Yeah, I can, I can point a, a likely location. It would likely be right in this area here or in this area over here.
In a, in a lower level of the garage or the upper level?
It would be in an upper level of the garage, yeah. Yeah. I, I, I think it would be, you know, they're, 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 they're gas power generators, natural gas power generators, so they're not as noisy as, say, a diesel or a gas power generator.
Right, I understand it, this is a sound-attenuating housing, it's right. Was just curious, because obviously for test runs and so on.
Very concerned for, you know, it's a, it's a, it does generate noise, but not a lot. And, you know, we don't get a lot of complaints. So, and we're right next to it. We're, you know, we're on top of that generator.
Is that part of your application? Because that's...
You'd like details of the...
I think that we should see where it's gonna go. And, you know, your garage seems to be pretty well, it's, it's going to be well attended with cars. So I think that you need to show us how you intend to fit it in. I was just, you know, we see applications for generators all the time, and they're a great amenity to a building that, you know, has that many people in it for sure.
Yep.
But they have to go to the Board of Adjustments usually. So I'm just trying to save you a step here. You may as well just...
Board of Adjustment for the generator?
Yeah, in many cases, depending on, so I, I think maybe we should see where you intend to put it in the garage, what floor, where, so that it fits in nicely. That would be great.
Madam Chair, typically, the, the, the subject when it goes to the Board of Adjustment is generally they have setback issues with the neighbors, whereas in this case, if they're proposing to put it essentially, it looks like almost centered in their property, you know, it seems like that would be less likely. So I don't know that we can necessarily say that that would fall into the jurisdiction of the Board of Adjustment, but they should still have to show us an intended location, and the township should opine on whether or not it requires the special permissions.
Sure, we'll, we'll locate it and, and put it on our plan.
So going back to the units before, so I just want to clarify, last time I had two questions. One was to provide the floor plans, which you still haven't done. And the second one, while I appreciate it, was not to highlight the units. It was actually to, you said you would consider moving them or resizing the three bedrooms, and you haven't brought that up tonight. So I'd like to know where that stands, please.
We, I, I'm showing the locations of all of the units. If there's any objection to the location, we can...
Yes, I, I raised concerns about the size of the units, particularly the two and three bedrooms, and you said that you'd go back and consider...
Yes, and, and I apologize, I, I will bring the unit designs for each of the low and moderate units so you compare them to the...
That's not what I asked, Margaret. What I'm asking you is to, instead of having a 975-square-foot three-bedroom, let's look at some of the larger two-bedrooms and repurpose those for the three bedrooms.
We'll consider that. And I actually was looking, and that brings up a good point, because the three-bedroom that I'm showing here, as I look at it, I think I need to size it up a little bit. So I'm gonna likely borrow a little bit of space from this two-bedroom unit next door. So as I, as I go through the process of designing the units, I usually just adjust some of the demising walls to make sure that they all fit.
So what's your target square footage then?
My target square footage for a three-bedroom? I don't have a target square footage. I come up with a layout that ideally suits a three-bedroom, not a luxury market three-bedroom, but a market rate, standard three-bedroom.
I didn't say it had to be a market rate-sized luxury three-bedroom. I just think 975 square feet is a bit tight.
Yeah, it, it is a little tight.
I can jump back in and ask a question. Do you have a storage area for bulk garbage, which is, you know, somebody throwing furniture out, somebody trying to get rid of patio furniture, for instance? And speaking of which, we, we should discuss patios, too.
Sure. I'm gonna let Operations answer that question. We do not have a location, like an outdoor location set up with a dumpster that people can throw, like a sofa in or something. But I'll let Operations, I'll, I'll let Jonathan speak to that, how they handle some of those items.
Okay. And can you address the patios?
Yeah, I can talk to the patios. From a size and, the landscape architect is designing the patio sizes and, and their locations, but I can speak to the general properties of the patios, where they're located, their, and approximate sizes.
I think we were talking about the patios off of the ground floor units, where there's some patio areas?
Yeah.
And as it stands now, I believe that those are, those sizes are beyond what they should be? So possibly requiring variance?
Yeah, I'm gonna let the, the landscape architect answer that question because I believe...
I'm marking this down.
Yeah, yeah, I know that's, that's good because I believe, in, within our coordination, she did do some resizing, and my plans may have been older plans that were larger, showing larger patios. So that may be where that, that discrepancy came in.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions concerning the, besides things that he will backfill at a later meeting? Any other questions? Does our township engineer have any questions?
Just in regards to the grading, I think Mr. Savage will present it later. The, the early part of our report did detail requests for a lot of the cut and fill calculations to kind of go into the earthwork more, which, which I'm assuming is that the subsequent submission will, will have some more that that might help better explain what we talked about earlier.
We'll defer to Mr. Savage. I'll defer to Mr. Savage to answer that question.
Everybody's good right now? Mayor?
No. It's on AO7.
There is a generator on the plant.
Can you point it out?
I'm sorry.
They found your generator.
Sheet A7, it shows, it shows Jen, is the, I'm assuming what that is, on the top of the parking lot.
It's on the roof?
No, the top, top deck of the garage. And AO7.
Is this it? They're on A. AO7?
Very top-left corner of the garage. Here's another mark. It's not. Are you looking at the engineering plans? Yeah. Okay. No, our, our, our special. You have the square, and you have it to...
Doesn't say Jen?
The square just doesn't say Jen.
Our system.
We have the newer plans.
5122.
It, it may be as we colored the drawings, there may have been some text updates that were missed here for the submitted plans. So, but you can see we have a strike, there, there is a large striked area.
Maybe you could just give us an inset detail of what you intend. You know, the size, how many units, you know, if your generator is three, I don't know. It's a big building.
Jonathan may be able to testify as to exactly what he intends the generator cover. Usually it's amenity spaces, emergency spaces, elevator, something like that, but it varies from project to project.
Not my refrigerator?
Are you close?
I'm, I'm obviously kidding. Does anybody, do any of you, any of you? Okay, with that, I would like to open...
Madam Chair, there's one, a, a generator is not required under the building code either, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's not required for this building.
So this is an amenity that the...
And that's what I said before, I said that's a really nice thing to have in that, in a building that, like that. Yep, I agree. Can I open this to the public right now? Okay, so any members from the public who have questions about the testimony, from the architect only, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and shoot.
Well, the, uh, they're all UV protected glazing, so it does protect, you know, UV lights transmitted in, but there is no, we, we don't shade the glass to keep it dark. Um, it's just regular UV thermally insulated glass.
And see, was there a section, uh, for along either sunset or the side?
There's, there was an elevation.
How big are the, are the windows for the, for the units that face, that faces, you know?
Face sunset, I'll have the...
Adjoining, adjoining properties?
The winter perspective? Does that help? This is, this, this here is sunset?
Afterglow.
I'm sorry, afterglow, and that sunset over here, sorry.
So how, how big are the...
The windows are, each window is typically three by, three by five, three by six, and then some of them, there's doubles of that, so they're usually, uh, if it's a double window, it would be six by six, if it's a triple window, it would be nine by six. So you can see we have a mixture of triples and doubles, and then there's a few singles.
Now it looks like, are, are there, are there any balconies or, or open, you know, large?
There, there are some what we call Juliette balconies, so we have them, there, it's, it's a balcony with no depth, so it allows you to, to open a door, look out, but then then close your door. It's not a full-depth balcony.
You can step out a little bit.
Well, you can stay, yeah, the railing is there to protect you from falling out. On the interior of the building is where we put the full-depth balconies. It's where people can go out and sit, you know, if they decide to leave things out on their balcony, it's not gonna affect the neighborhood too much. This way, we, we don't keep our full balconies usually street-facing.
Are there any balconies fronting sunset, any adjoining properties?
So you can see, whoops, apologize, you can see these balconies are, have no significant depth, they're just Juliette balconies that pop out, uh, so we, we don't, we, on any of the public streets, we're not gonna put balconies, full balconies. We'll keep them for the internal portions of the project.
So, so mostly on the backside facing Montclair mostly?
Yes, and in the internal courtyards that we have.
But not, not on the side, because I know you have the parking deck in the middle, right, you have some units along sunset, and then the properties on, on that left side.
You go to a plan, so the areas will likely have balconies, will be here, all along here, and here. You can see these insets here, they're balconies. We do have some full balconies over here as well, here, uh, and then in this courtyard. We may have some here, although not shown, but we wouldn't put them along here, or here, here, or here.
Okay. Um, I didn't see on the plan, are there, are there any sconces or lights on the, on the building facing sunset, or are they adjoining residences?
Let me take you to the plan. There's likely, likely we do, um, well, at the balconies, we're required at any door to have a light, so at the balconies, we will have a light. Uh, at the main entry to the building, we'll have decorative lighting, decorative sconces, they're not, they're not used to provide any light, protective light or light for the ground, they're just decorative, they accent the door so you know where to go when you're arriving to the building at night, um, so we will provide that at the entry.
On the face of the light between units, you don't have, not typically sometimes architects like to have the up and down lights?
No, no.
You don't have any, yeah.
Yeah, typically those, you know, lighting or lighting the building happens in office buildings, residential buildings, we don't generally like to light them, just because tenants then have to shut their windows and there's light shining into the, the units, that's not generally what, you get a lot of complaints if you're shining lights into the units.
Right. Um, I saw on your architectural plan, I think you have an elevator, is there, um, an elevator headhouse? I guess it's a machine list on top of the elevator that sticks up above the parking deck?
Yeah, it, it does stick up above the roof, you know, there's code-required overrun height that you have to meet, but it's not like, uh, the older elevators where you have the machine and the gears and all that stuff, it's machine rooms.
You're not anticipating having like a, like a hydraulic or holeless elevator?
No, typically we do the Otis, like the Otis Gen 2 or similar. I'm using that as a sample, it's a, it's a, it's a type of motor-driven elevator that has its, its motors on the side of the car versus on the top, or excuse me, or a hydraulic elevator that he mentioned, which would be, uh, you know, a hydraulic piston that goes into the ground and forces the elevator up. They're generally very slow, we find that the Gen 2s are a little bit quicker.
So how big is the headhouse above that top, that top floor?
It's the...
Visible, visible from the street, because I think we asked for a section, I don't know if there was a section.
Well, we did show perspective, perspective view, and you wouldn't...
But is there a section, because that headhouse will stick up significantly above the roof?
It, it sticks up approximately, uh, four and a half to five feet above the roof, and our parapits are generally, they range from two to four feet, so from the grade, you're, you're never gonna see that, that elevator, um, overrun.
Right. And, and the machine, is the machine on the roof for the elevator?
No, 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 it, it, the machine room is in the building, and the, the, I'm, it's, I'm getting into specifics for the different types of elevators, but generally the model is that the gears and the, the motor drive the elevator and it's actually in and part of the, the cab and car, or the, the tracks that go up versus, you know, years ago, you see the cable that comes down and it, it's got all these gears up above, that's not what we're doing here. We, the only thing we need above the elevator is just clear head height. It's a, a safety rule in case somebody is, happens to be on top of the elevator and it goes all the way to the top, you, you don't get crushed.
Um, as far as the, the exterior, I, I guess you just did the building, but there, is there any lighting, not on the building, but maybe facing the building in the landscaping areas?
Um, I...
That's part of your architectural plan or that?
I, yeah, it's not part of my plan, I, I, and I, like, like I said before, I generally don't like lighting the building in any way, uh, just because the units, it's, it's, it's not, so I would discourage it if it were planned.
Is there any signage for the, for the property? And can you show where the signage would be?
Again, I, I think Mr. Savage covered that last time, and he can certainly...
No, I don't believe so.
I, I can show you the, the actual sign that we're proposing, because I do have it in, as part of my plans.
You show the location of the sign on your plan?
I, I don't show the location, Mr. Savage does show the location on his plans.
I don't believe I saw it on the, on the, on the, uh, the civil drawings did not show any signage.
I, I, I believe it was covered last meeting, but I'll, I'll show you, so this, this right here is the monument sign that we're proposing. Um, I could zoom in and give you its approximate dimension. Okay, oh, then, you know what, I'll have to go to a civil engineer's plan.
It wasn't clearly shown in the civil drawings at all?
Yeah, the, um... First of all, Mr. Savage, you, you understand you're still under oath, correct? Mr. Savage?
Yes, I do.
You're under oath and your credentials are unchanged and your license is still in effect.
Yeah.
Okay. Is the monument sign going where it is today?
Yeah, it's going, i- i- it's, it's going where the current sign for the school is. I just, I, I need to, uh, plan to point to that location.
Can you tell me how big that sign is and what lighting would be on that sign?
Sure, I, I can.
And just a recommendation, wouldn't that sign be better closer to the intersection than across from a residential area where it doesn't really...
So that, that, um...
You can walk up to the screen if it's easier.
There you go. So that, this is the sign here, so that was on the plans, it's called out as a 26 square foot, uh, per side.
Okay, so it is moving closer than the Bloomfield Avenue, because the current signs off, right?
Yeah, there, there is a current sign that's up in, uh, right around this location, that sign is moving down to this location.
Okay, and, and how big is that sign?
Uh, 26 square foot per sign.
Height, width?
I'll, I'll do the dimension.
And material?
So the, this, uh, height, the sign is about nine by two feet, there's, it's brick, and it, it's likely some cast material. I, I, I don't know the actual material just yet, we haven't determined that material. But it'll have just one sunset written on it, it's got, uh, the sign itself is nine by two. The overall height will be about three and a half feet.
Will be lit, will be lit?
Likely it will be lit, uh, whether they'll, they're, it's backlit or whether it's lit from landscape lighting, I, I don't know just yet.
Can I recommend that it be backlit and not lit to the sign that would put, you know, light emissions towards residential buildings?
I, I, I'm not, unfortunately, I'm not the one to light it, but yeah, I'm sure we can, we can accommodate that.
That's fine, we'll, we'll accommodate that.
Backlit sign?
There's only one street-side sign, right?
Yeah, is there, how many street-side signs are there?
That, just that one, there is a sign above the entry to the building. Above the, uh, we have a little canopy and above the door.
Do you have a photo or section of that?
I do. Oh, small, yeah, it's very small. It will likely be backlit as well.
Just a question, is this building complying with any lead, you know?
No, we do have some, uh...
Like the concrete and the, the color of the concrete, as far as like emissions?
No, but we are gonna, we are gonna do some, uh, green, yeah, green items, um, we're gonna do, uh, light-colored roof to mitigate some of the heat island effect. Um, there will be recycled content within the building. Um, we do low-flow water fixtures throughout the building, we do LED light fixtures throughout the building, um, all of which, you know, contribute.
Yeah.
And, you know, low VOC paints as we, as we, uh, you know, paint the building.
Just a question. Think I have any more architectural specific questions? Did, again, did, did you ever provide the cross-section, cross-section out of rendering? I think we asked last time, a cross-section in the street showing the topography in the building as a typical cross-section? Is that being provided at any time?
I, we did show a rendering, I, I did not show a cross-section. I don't, I apologize, I don't remember that being asked.
That was discussed last meeting.
What, what is, cross-section of what?
A cr, like a cr, a cross-section of the property through the building to see the grading, you know, elevation from the road, the grading, the, you know, I think there's some retaining walls maybe for the driveway, I think the perspective, it's hard to see, you know, those elevation unless you do a, a section, you know, typical architectural section through the, the ground through the building to, to get a better understanding from the street perspective or residential property perspective.
We, we did bring a perspective, uh, but we did not, we did not bring a section.
I think that was requested at the last meeting.
I think I've been pushing for all kinds of elevation information, I would love to see something like that, but I...
Am I allowed to bring one next meeting?
I wouldn't.
I, I can bring a section.
I wouldn't even know how to vocalize it.
To try to discuss, you know?
Yeah.
No, I can bring a section.
That'd be great, thanks. It's just so that we have an understanding, it's very difficult to understand how this site is going to become that site.
I, I understand, I'll, I'll bring along the, the unit plans, I will bring a section.
Thank you.
But not just an architectural section, can it be set through the topography of the property to get real...
Like a site section. Site section, including the building. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask follow-up? Uh, with regards to the lighting that you mentioned that is within architectural scope, uh, such as that at balcony doors, uh, will all of that be full cutoff fixtures? Or will it throw light upwards?
Oh, no, they, they'll, those lights will, they'll be shielded lights down, um, you know, whether we put them in the software or they're wall-mounted, they're essentially just accent lights for light, so that when you open a door, you're not walking into the dark, lights that just, it's just to light the surface of the balcony so that you can step out and, and feel safe.
Right, I'm just, you know, thinking of like a sconce that sometimes goes up and down, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't have more light than necessary going up into the sky.
All, all of our balconies are covered and we wouldn't put uplighting onto the balcony, it doesn't, it doesn't add anything.
Okay, so all, all balcony lighting will, will be downlight only?
Downlight.
Thank you.
Another, just a quick follow-up with that, do you plan on doing that for the Juliette balconies? Are they required?
No.
They're not, okay.
No, because you're not stepping outside, so that wouldn't be required.
That's what I thought, I'm facing the residence, so, thank you. Uh, good evening, Dan Callahan, 15 Afterglow Avenue in Verona. I'd like to go back to that AO7 page if we could, and maybe ask a few questions about the southwest corner of the building. So the side of the parking garage there toward Afterglow?
Let, let me just get to the...
Got you. Are there any openings to the parking garage that faces the, the house there on the left? I guess just to make it clear, my house is the one right there on the left, so I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions about what's going on in that back corner.
Sure, so yes, these are all, this, this garage is open.
It's open?
It, it is a fully open garage, yes.
So though cars will be pulling up, the headlights will be hitting my house as they tinker back and forth? If it's open on every level and they're coming up at...
Yeah, it, it is open, but we can't, you, you need to make sure that it's, we, we need to provide protective railing, so it's a, it's a pre-cast garage, and pre-cast garages come in sections of concrete, they're like larger, big, long, you've probably seen them as you're driving down the highway, the big Ts, so it's like an erector set, it gets put together, but the spandrel panels are put up and those, the height of the spandrel panel protects the car from going off the edge, so it's a full piece of concrete at headlight, uh, height, so you, you won't see a car driving in that direction.
The way you described was, it's, along a highway though, not a house, right? You said along the highway, usually see them? I just find that fascinating.
Pre-cast...
To describe the way it is, like where those decks usually exist, it's along the highway.
No, they're delivered to, I mean, we do pre-cast decks everywhere, I mean, in suburbia all over, yeah.
So they're open, three-foot headlights do get out, there will be glare into the neighborhood essentially is the...
No, but what I said was there wouldn't be, that the spandrel panel would be high enough to protect from the height of the headlights.
And then the, the height along the back two stories of the building that are being built, that's the 535-foot two-story step-up?
So, uh, I'm, I'm not sure I fully understand your question, but this is a three-story portion of the building, and this side of the building is four stories, just because of the way grade is so high at this end and dips down as it goes this direction. But I said that our greatest excavation would be in this area along the garage, right in here.
Right, but I guess I'm, I'm curious, like, from the existing ground level, how high up are we, are we going, right? Like, if, if it's two stories, three stories?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to that elevation to show you the, the elevation of that garage.
And do you have the, is that one of the angles from there, from?
Oh, that's a little too far. There we are. So you can see what happens with grade here. Grade comes up quite considerably along here, and that's the garage beyond. You can see the openings in the garage, and then the, that panel that I was talking about that hides the headlights.
Yeah, thank you. And then there was a little scuttlebutt my neighbor brought up about the balconies on that corner, um, just respectfully, if we could look to face the balconies the other way and not toward the corner of the yard, um, back to that, I guess, AO7. I think you highlighted, um, so, closest one on the, on the curve there, uh, toward the elevator or the parking deck, uh, there you go.
These here?
Yeah, I mean, those, those are super close.
Yeah, I should have this balcony look this direction, rather than that direction? Is that, would that be preferable?
I don't know.
The balcony is really just a window.
Eliminate it.
Just eliminate, all right, yeah, we'll just cut them out.
Thank, that'd be appreciated. Um, and then the, the setbacks there, those circles, is that, is that 75 feet is sort of what we're looking to adhere to from my property line?
I'm sorry, let me just, where, where exactly are we cutting out the balconies so that...
Do you have the is that one of the angles from there from?
Oh, that's too far. There we are. So you can see what happens with grade here. Grade comes up quite considerably along here and that's the garage beyond. You could see the openings in the garage and then that panel that I was talking about that hides the headlights.
Yeah, thank you. And then there was a little scuttlebutt my neighbor brought up about the balconies on that corner. Just respectfully, if we could look to face the balconies the other way and not toward the corner of the yard. Back to that, I guess, A oh seven. I think you highlighted. So closest one on the on the curve there toward the elevator or the parking deck. There you go.
These here.
Yeah, I mean, those are super close.
I should have this balcony look this direction rather than that direction. Is that would that be preferable?
I don't. The balcony is really just a window.
Just limit, all right, yeah, we'll just cut them out.
Thank that'd be appreciated. And then the the setbacks there, those circles, is that is that 75 feet is sort of what we're looking to adhere to? From my property line?
I'm sorry, let me just, where exactly are we cutting out the balconies so that Greg can understand how to make the condition?
It would be the units, I would say that about the garage.
How many units?
I think it's two, the two those two units.
Yeah.
This one could face in toward the courtyard, though, right? This one, this one could face in the courtyard.
That one stacked on the back.
This one here, we don't want it looking in that direction.
Okay. And then those two to the left, it looks like maybe one toward the courtyard and then you were maybe mentioning one toward, I think it's overlooked terrace is the little.
This one we have, we have one, we're showing one here.
Yeah. There's a house right there, it's not mine, so. Not gonna. Let him fight it out. And then what's the setback? Do you know the setback to overlooked terrace there as well?
Before we do that, can I I just need some clarification on how we identify the units and and what we're doing? I know you said it, but it was. Because the units don't have numbers, so that's why I was just trying to.
Yeah, the each unit is not numbered. It is the two bedroom den that abuts the garage. I believe it's it's the only two bedroom den that abuts the garage.
And what floor is this?
It would be all floors that that unit exists.
All floors of that, you're saying?
All line.
The whole line. It's three units.
Is the condition exactly?
Entire, the one is going to be eliminated, the other is going to face the pack, face the courtyard.
Correct.
Right, correct. All right, again, I'm sorry for my, it's two different units that this is going to impact or one unit had two decks?
It doesn't really show a balcony.
Right.
We are showing a deck on the one unit. You can see it's shown actually facing the courtyard already.
Okay, I see that.
It's this two bedroom den that we don't want looking this direction or that direction.
It's gonna go that way.
So we won't put any terrace on that.
No terrace. So it's only on one, it's only gonna impact one unit along the line?
Two. No, it's it's it's. It is two, we're, I wanna make sure that we are showing this, the prohibition for this unit, three face this direction.
Correct, okay.
Well, you know what, we can make an exhibit that shows the correct.
Fine.
And that way you'll 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 have something that you can hold.
Thank you. And and then to confirm, just to double check while we're here, so there's no plans for any outdoor activities, set up walkways on that side of the building? So that's gonna be whatever green space is left, existing trees.
That's correct, this is green space all out here, the areas were shown green. This is a passive courtyard, so it's more passive recreation. Obviously, the pool is more active recreation.
And at that edge of the courtyard there, is there gonna be something to keep residents toward where the the courtyard is? Or are they gonna be sort of able to walk out into the grass and mull?
They they there's no prohibition from them leaving this courtyard, I don't think. Oh, we do, okay, so we do have a fence. I'm corrected, we have a fence here. And I I believe there's a fence additionally that goes around the property as well.
There's one along the cliff for sure and then the the one on the left is kind of spotty today.
Yeah, I think we were gonna, I think last time we were gonna replace all of that fence with new fence.
And then if you could just help me confirm, so the the setbacks there to the two property lines at 15 Afterglow and then to overlooked terrace? Are we we're holding 75 feet?
Well, let's let that's a question for.
The corner means 50 there and.
So let me just, so that looks like that 50 line just barely touches here. This one is obviously a lot further from that line, but we have this corner and we're not putting any terraces on that corner, that's the closest.
And then assuming the the landscape architect would be who we could discuss?
Absolutely.
Because I mean, just for the put it on the record, I mean, those tree heights, I just planted some as well, like those are kind of tricky with the scale and the heights that they've shown. So five or six years to grow, two feet a year with eight foot trees versus 14 foot trees. I know there's a price difference, but it would be great to touch on that eventually. But thank you for the help with the balconies.
We can ask the landscape architect about that stuff, for sure.
I have a follow up question. If we could go to slide. A zero five? For the. Zero five. For the resident that just spoke, how about the unit in the upper left hand corner? Would that balcony be facing him or is there not no proposed?
We're not showing, they're not showing a balcony on that unit right now. And again, that would be considered this a street front, at least this side. Would we we, if you prefer, we'll eliminate any balcony on this side if that's what you prefer.
Yeah, I think that was. And and then obviously the units above and underneath it, if there are any.
You're saying no balcony, is that, just to be clear, what?
Yeah, he, I believe he's.
Asking, is there a balcony on that upper corner?
We are currently not showing one.
You're not showing one or there isn't one?
There isn't one planned.
No, and he'll he'll add that to the, he'll add that to the exhibit that he's preparing.
Thank you. That's appreciated.
Yeah, I I can say, as we design the units, it's nice to have these reminders where there is a prohibition because sometimes it a balcony lends itself to a unit. And if it's prohibition, we won't just won't do it. But if it lends itself, we'd say, oh, that's a great view, let's put it in. But so it we don't have that unit designed yet and we're not planning it, but it's good to have that understanding.
Agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not to put anything on that side, thank you.
So that would be?
That that would be an added unit.
To the developer to not put, sorry.
To not add any sort of balcony to that Afterglow facing unit right there.
Correct, and what I'll do is I'll I'll create a a drawing that highlights the areas that we are prohibited from putting balconies on. That way you could make it a part of the.
That would be very helpful.
Sure.
A follow up regarding the parking garage for me. What is the reasoning why the parking garage is open? Is that a requirement from code or is that just simply a desire as to how these are built?
Yeah, I mean, you want the you want you don't want carbon monoxide to to build up in these garages. You want air to freely flow. It's partly the reason why we have area ways adjacent to the garage to make sure that air flows freely through the garages.
Okay, and I assume the interior of the garage will be lit?
It it would be lit, yes. They would have ceiling ceiling lighting to light the the floor of the garage.
How would you prevent light spill out of the garage?
We actually have done a lighting plan for the roof. I believe it was asked for last time. I think the engineer can testify to that. The lighting interior to the garage, you know, all lighting is shielded and we're it's meant to light the floors of the garage only. So we would show that there wouldn't be light spillage, we'd have shields.
Okay, including the including the interior floors of the garage? You're saying that those would not provide any light spillage through the openings of the garage?
Absolutely.
Onto adjacent properties?
Yes. Well, I think.
Any, but it would be minimized.
Minimized, yes. I mean, light, you know, bounces everywhere and, you know, there is light that some amount of light that bounces out. But I I it would be minimized and maybe not measurable.
Thank you.
So real quick, that facade that's facing 15 Afterglow? It's just you're gonna, it's not a wall. Do do we have a picture of what?
I had an elevation, I can go back to it if you'd like.
I'm just, I don't recall seeing a bunch of open parking deck kind of. Area there and there are no units on that side, correct? There are no units that surround the garage on that side because you said it's gonna be open.
That's correct.
So what is? Ah, aha, so it looks like I'm going to Macy's.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I mean, like like you said, Madam Chair, that is a, you know, it's a parking garage, but it is it is shielded by a lot of topography. So the topography. And. Yeah, we're not showing the existing tree line that's there. There is a significant tree line that you'd see in the aerial. So I I I I believe that this would not be intrusive or obscene to your your view. You know, it'd be well shielded.
And is this a raw concrete finish, cast concrete or?
Yeah, the color concrete to match the the building color.
So what color is it gonna be? It's gonna be kind of a gray or?
We we did a gray color, you know, we can be open to an alternate color if the board chooses.
Do you have any, at some point, do you have actual material samples or are we only going off of?
I I could bring some some samples if you'd like to see the samples, absolutely.
That would be appreciated if you have them.
Mm hmm.
I believe the proper term is louvers, right? Would be what we could potentially install that would allow the emissions out but keep the light in to close the gap a little bit or?
I I would say yes and no. We're required by code to have a certain amount of openness in the garage. Louvers detract from that, so if we don't, you could see this garage, it's not open on all sides. It's only open on the the two sides if I go back to the plan.
Could you do a decorative mesh panel of some sort?
Potentially, if we if we, I haven't done the openness calculations yet. Usually that comes later on after the the garage has been engineered and we know what those the the openings are. We have the floor levels done, the concrete spandrel panels have been designed and we know what those openings are gonna be. We could do some calculations to see whether we have the openness and whether we can provide screening.
Be nice to look at. With the calculations, we'd love to take a look and see if we could do decorative or some some louvering for the top two floors, I feel like, at least.
For from a process question, I mean, I think that that's, I don't know if you're doing mechanical engineering at this point in time, which it sounds like that's what this would fall under. I'm trying to figure out how we could actually, what request we would make of the applicant that can be committed to during this stage. I'm open to open to suggestions.
We could absolutely, I mean, I could I could tell you we could provide some type of screening. I just, I I don't wanna over promise is what I'm saying. So I I don't wanna come with you and say, look at all, you know, the density of the screening, you're never gonna see in. And and in reality, I have to back off on that a little bit. Maybe I could come with you with a conservative estimate of what the screening could be and if that would be acceptable to the board?
I I think that would be that would be helpful.
I'm I'm sorry, what was that?
For example?
The screening, well, usually it's just the way that's done. It's usually fabricated on like it's usually subcontracted and fabricated. It's not, it's not like a off the shelf item that you just apply to these things, so.
Right, like I know.
I would be bringing pieces of metal that, you know, you you'd look at black metal, we've all seen it. It's, you know, I don't know if there's any advantage to that.
So like a typical air intake louver in a commercial HVAC installation is typically spec'd at 50% free area?
No, we could do something even a little more decorative.
That that's what I'm kind of, what I'm what I'm kind of.
We could have a special pattern or something like.
We will agree as a condition of approval to work with the board's engineer on appropriate screening so long as it's understood that that screening cannot cause the applicant to run afoul of the building codes or anything like that.
Thank you. That that works for me, yeah.
Are there any other follow up? Oh, please, I'm sorry.
Hi, William Hatfield, 14 Afterglow, across the street from 15. I had asked at the last hearing for overlays of the design of the building on the property, the before, after.
We we actually have that, yeah, the engineer's gonna present that.
One of the, you know, I think it was helpful for you to go walk through some of the elevations and talking about the cut and fill, but you didn't walk through the elevations on the Afterglow side. So I was wondering if you could do that for us. You walked through the elevations on the on the Sunset side, on the Bloomfield side and on the Montclair side. And I I also wanna ask some questions about the cut and fill and the dark lines on the Afterglow side because I think you're removing a lot of the hill from what I can see from the.
Yeah, actually, I think he said 20 feet are coming out on the.
Yeah, I'm just trying to under, I'm trying to understand because you walked through the other sides of the building, but you didn't walk through that side of the building. And you didn't explain what was gonna be removed versus what was cut and filled. And then you didn't fully explain the swale on that side of the building either. So I I have a lot of questions. I think that there's a lot of uncertainty about this plan, about what you're removing, what you're cutting, what you're filling and how it's gonna fit on top of this mountain. And actually, what it's gonna look like, how it's gonna look much different than what we have there now. Because you're talking about a four story, almost 50 feet plus the mechanics on top of that. And I don't, your 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 plan view is not descriptive enough and your street view is like from a pedestrian. What what does that look like from a second story across the street? I'm gonna be seeing the mechanics, I'm gonna be seeing your parking deck, I'm gonna be seeing the lights on the top of your deck.
I I can, I can review that right now with you.
I'm just, I'm I'm really uncomfortable with what you presented. I don't think that it's accurate. It's a rendering, it's not accurate.
But I I can, I mean.
If you can walk me through the elevations first.
Well, sir, sir, if you had any to ask, what what is the basis for your assertion that it's that what was presented is not accurate? Do you have any basis for that?
I do, because you haven't shown the current elevation.
Not not in terms of what we haven't shown, what what is your basis?
I don't think that the renderings that you've shown accurately reflect.
I understand that.
The building would look like from Afterglow or Sunset. If you wanna show me the renderings, I'll explain them to you. I don't think they're accurate.
But your basis for saying they're not accurate is just because you think they're not accurate or you don't have any objective.
Do you mean that they're incomplete or they're not, or there there is an inaccuracy that makes them?
I think the elevations do not appear accurate to me, either from Sunset or from Afterglow. And I've lived in this neighborhood for six years. That's unless you're removing 30 feet of material, that doesn't look accurate to me, especially on the Afterglow side, if you show that one.
You you don't see the material removed from this side.
Well, that's that's exactly what I asked for the last time. I wanna understand what the property looks like now, how you're changing the property to place these structures on it. You it's it's a bait and switch. You've not shown exactly what you're doing and this rendering is not accurate from street level. It doesn't look anything like the property that's.
I guess I'm 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 not understanding what you're looking for from a cut and fit, you're looking for cut and fill.
I think I think that that the exhibit that you requested is gonna be provided by Mr. Savage.
Yeah, I mean, when he does the cut and fill calculations.
That's not, what what you're asking for is not to be provided by the architect, it's to be provided for by the engineer.
I'm reacting to what the architects provided in this street level view and if you flip to the Afterglow street level view, I'm not recognizing the property because that's not, that's not ground level.
No, this is not, actually, I I should have said that, actually, you're right. This is not taking as if you could see the sidewalk in the foreground. So you see the sidewalk here? So this is and and we're up above the car here, so this is not taken as if we're standing on Sunset. We're actually up above a little bit. I I could do a view where we're closer and at grade, but I I don't know that that's gonna.
Is this a is this a person standing on the side of one set at one Sunset or is this somebody on their first floor? Somebody in their car?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, we.
What are we actually seeing here?
Well, first of all, we comply with the standards that are set forth in the development plan with regard to height and everything else. I don't know that we can give you an illustration that is gonna show you exactly what everything is gonna look like from your from the second floor of your home. So I mean, I apologize, but we're not gonna be able to do that. What we can do and what we have shown is that we comply with all of the regulations governing all of the matters that you're raising. And what we can also do, as we've done, is to, you know, spend spend some funds and some time to provide, you know, a lot of illustrative views of the property from various perspectives so that folks in the area can get a really good feel for what this is going to look like. That's the best that I think we can reasonably be expected to do.
What I can, I I can, what I can tell you is that we modeled this building accurately to its dimensions. We modeled the grading accurately to the grading and now we've provided the landscaping accurate to the landscaping. It is a computer generated rendering. It's it's, you know, it has a field of view and a vantage point. It is up above what your normal field of view would be versus down on the sidewalk, we're step back. So that's the only thing I can tell you.
Am I standing, am I a person standing on Sunset Avenue looking at the property?
I could say you're.
Person 10 feet above the ground?
I would say you're approximately 20 feet above the ground, about 30 feet off the edge of this curb.
So that's a little, I would, I would say that that's not the way you describe this to us when you walk through this. Can you go to the, can you go to the Afterglow one? I'd like to see that one, the Afterglow rendering. Because this, that's not a, that, for a for a person that's walking up the street, that's not what you would see from your.
Well, I, this is a photo, actually.
Hold on, let me just, so so that's not the purpose of of why this was provided. We provided elevations to show the architectural features of the building at the last meeting and the comment was, well, we weren't showing any of the trees. And we weren't showing the trees because we were trying to show the architectural elements of the building and if you covered it up with trees, then you wouldn't get a real feel for what that is.
I corrected myself, I want it both ways.
So so the, so what we did this time was we 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 provided you with the trees so that you could you could still see some of the architect. so that you could, you could still see some of the architecture, but with the trees. So that's what we did. We're, we're not here, we're not required to provide illustrations from, you know, every imaginable aspect in the area, including, you know, your second-story room, to show what that view is going to look like. So that's not a reasonable expectation on your part.
But I'm asking you, you're presenting this to the board and the public as to what your facility is going to look like. So I'm trying to understand this rendering, which is computer-generated, what's its perspective? Am I, where am I standing here? This is my neighbor's property, this is the corner of, I know where it is, the corner of Sunset and Afterglow, and we're standing on that corner near his fence. How, how, is this a person standing here, a 12-foot-tall person, a 20-foot-tall person? I'm not really understanding what we're looking at.
I would say the vantage point is approximately 12 feet high.
And then what happened to the hill that is there? Has the hill been removed? There's a hill, there's a slope that goes up to the school with rock, with rock outcroppings, tall trees. It's a steep slope.
Yeah, I understand what Mr. Hatfield is, is trying to get across here. Like, it, it looks from this, it looks like a flat property.
Correct.
Or almost flat. And everybody knows this is an extremely steep property, so I understand what he's saying is that it, it's just not conveying right the, the, the development and how it's going to sit.
So that's my, I, I understand what the property looks like now. I run by it, I walk by it, I drive by it every day. I know what the property looks like because it's right across from my house, I stare at it. When you put that rendering up, it looks nothing like the property. The property, the property that I look at has about a 15 to 20-foot graded hill, at least, and the, the school is far back on the other side of the hill. So I, there's a, I, I asked for an overlay for a simple reason. Where is the school now, and what does it look like from a plan?
Yeah.
And from a, from a street level, and what does your facility look like? Even if it's a dotted line of the school.
So, so let me, let me just.
Where does the school fit inside of your plan?
Mr. Hatfield.
Let me finish my question.
But, but, please let him finish, please let Mr. Hatfield finish.
But it's not for this witness.
I live in this neighborhood, I moved to this neighborhood. I moved to this neighborhood because it was quiet, because it was a dead-end street, because there wasn't a lot of traffic. I particularly moved here for that, and you're about to take it all away. So I have an understanding of what the property looks like now. I'm trying to find out what your construction is going to do, how it's going to alter the landscape, and what I'm going to be looking at across the street from my house. That's what I'm asking, and what you've rendered does not appear to me to be the same property. It looks dramatically different than the property that is there now, and we have a, a right to understand, how do you take what's there now and build what you have, and what's that going to do to the rest of the neighborhood? And you haven't adequately defined that, explained it, or presented any plans that show how that's going to be done. That's what I'm here for.
Mr. Hatfield, I think everybody understands, and I think you've made some very good points. I think, you know, you pointed out some deficiencies, my word, not theirs, but in, in terms of the perspective that we're presenting. Quite honestly, I thought it was street level as well, and now I'm told it was 15 feet, so.
That's a good clarification.
Okay, but the, the architect has indicated that he can provide, he has indicated to the board earlier, he will provide more documents, if you will, that, renderings that, that will try to answer all of the questions that you were asking, that some other board members have asked. One thing that, that we need to be aware of, and, and again, I think you've raised great points, you know, and, and I have to say it, and you're not really entitled to anything, okay? The, the, the applicant puts on an application that meets the criteria of our site plan. What they provide and the questions that you ask, and if they're willing to provide them, which they are, you know, is wonderful. But they don't have to produce anything to satisfy anybody in the neighborhood. And I just need to say that for the record, because they're willing to do it for you, which is great, but the application can't be all of the neighbors demanding certain, and I'm not saying you demanded, but all of the neighbors saying, I want to see this, I want to see this, because that's not how these work. And so I'm saying that really for the benefit of the general public, rather than to you. But they are willing to accommodate you, which is great, but it's, you know, there's no, they don't have to, but they are, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, maybe it's helpful just to walk through the elevations along Afterglow. That's, like, that and the dark blue lines where you said you were going to tie in on the cut-and-fill, because I know that you walked through the other three sides of the development, I haven't understood that, that side. So that would be helpful.
So, Mr. Hatfield, again, you, you raised this at the last meeting. We have an exhibit that was prepared especially for you. It was prepared by the engineer. So we're taking questions right now of, of the architect with regard to the testimony that's been provided by the architect. You're raising additional questions, not saying they're bad questions, but what I'm trying to say is that, we have an exhibit for you with our engineer, he's up next.
Well, just wait a second. I mean, the architect walked us through the, the three sides of the building. I know that we, we did discuss the one side of the garage there.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
The architect is going to be here, he's going to be here next meeting. Let's see what the engineer has to say. Hopefully, Mr. Hatfield will be satisfied, at least that he has a clear vision of what it is. And then if we have to come back to the architect, we can. But they said the engineer did create the exhibit, so let's try that first.
May I suggest just one more thing briefly? It does appear that he has a, a exhibit up that shows, if I'm correct, a ghost outline of, of the building on the existing lot. That might, is, am I correct?
Could I just explain something to Mr. Hatfield, and, and relative to why that perspective seems different?
Uh, the chair, the chair can respond.
Could I just explain something as to why that, that perspective view doesn't look like the view that he's used to seeing? And it's, it's simply because the building, the building, and as you'll see in the engineer's exhibit, is closer and it occupies part of that hill. So since the building is now part of that hill and it's stepping up that hill, what you're only going to see is that, that, those four stories that are at the, at that lower grade. You're not seeing that hill anymore, because the building is now stepping up that hill. And I, I mean, I, I prepared the perspective rendering, I prepared it, you know, on the site with the grading. I can tell you it's accurate to its vantage point. That's all I can testify to.
And the first floor of that Afterglow side, what's behind it? Is that where the stormwater retention basins are, under the parking deck?
Yes, so this is the lowest level of that side.
Yeah.
Behind those units is the garage, the garage does slope up. And I did go through some of the grades along this side and this side as well. This, is that elevation 530? So the grade along this edge of the building is at 530.
And how deep below 530 is the stormwater basin?
The stormwater basin is behind that, I'll let the engineer talk through its, its, its grades, but it's under the garage and it's in this area. The garage does slope up, so the garage starts at 530, and it ends at 535 and a half.
And on the, I guess that's the west, is that the west side of the garage where it's sloping up? Or is that the south, that's the south side now? The south side is where the ramps are?
The ramp, I, I, if you look at my cursor as it moves across, this is 530. This ramp goes up to about 5 and a half feet. This level here is about 535 and a half. It's also below grade, because you can't see that, that level from this side. And then it ramps up again to get to 11 feet difference, and accesses the upper level at this direction. You see, we have a cut line here that sort of shows you the ramp going up. It cuts it off, and then you see below that what's happening at the 530 level.
And the, the retaining wall, I guess that's on the south side?
So the retaining wall is the building itself. This, this does do some retaining to allow some openness in the garage. This back wall here is all in retaining.
And where's the swale where you're removing material? Is that on the south side of the building?
It's a regrading so that we can allow the water from this side of the, of the property to get into our storm basin.
And that's going to be handled by the engineer?
And I'll let him speak to that, yeah.
All right, I'll wait for the engineer, thank you.
Sure.
And, and sir, you had another graphic up that I thought might have been informative. If I was looking at it correctly, it did look like an outline of the proposed building on a satellite photo of the current property, is that correct?
Yes, I do have that, that's the engineer prepared, and, and.
Okay, so that will be during the engineer's testimony?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I think that will be very helpful.
Why don't we take a few minutes for, we have one document from the construction code official that we want to review with the two of you? Okay, you, you have that document?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll review that after a break, we'll just take a couple minutes, okay?
I mean, if that's what you want to do, I mean, I, you know. We, we have the engineer here, we wanted him to provide his testimony. These, these comments, both from the construction code official and some from review, really relate to both issues. So when we're done with the engineer, I was just going to go through and say, agree, 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 you know, but it's, it doesn't seem to me that it's appropriate to do that until we've heard from the engineer.
So the engineer is going to testify on the questions that, only the questions that were raised this evening? Or is he going to blend into a lane that we haven't?
No, no.
We have no site plans yet, right? They're getting redone, there's a stormwater management report that's getting redone, landscaping is getting redone.
He's only, he's testifying as to the aerial map and the exhibit that he prepared in response to Mr. Hatfield's question from the last meeting.
Okay, we can do that when we get back.
Yeah, and, and then we'll, we'll go through these, we'll get through these very quickly.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Well, you just, now my arm hurts. You know, people, people, certified 25 words, people are taking upwards of 24 years of success. Right now, like, not just here, but everywhere, it has gone up, to speak.
Living side. So it's four stories. The elevation is higher for schools, so then you go from there.
Just a couple of weeks around.
I don't know.
Oh, that's. Yeah, the one on the white house. It will be successful.
Just that we got all three. Always saying one thing in front of. Nice job. Yeah, it's like a close with this. Next. But I'm telling you, it's just don't worry. So they're going to run.
A lot of good water drought in the last year.
The building was, the gentleman, the captain, engaging with us and I can only imagine. I actually, the planning.
I, you know, just had all the more good, I just, he was incredible with us and just, you know.
George might come back. You're like.
Very small. We realized that. So you didn't see the same people. And then, that was the one. I had a major. So I'm the guy that's out, so I think it's looking. What does work? When you're in, when you're in. Right. Originally, you know. So the engineer. Yes, and we had some. Yes, it's crazy. I was going to. I'm sending this in. The work. They're. From A to B. Yeah. So. That's natural. I don't really think. So I'm going to. Like. Yeah. Can I do a little? So. You're on the grass. I know. When you do. They're. They have. The director was. That we had to give him this. It was. Really. I was. We're here. Well. We have. I can do this with me first of all. I'm going to. It's bad. I'm going to. 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 Right.
Steve, you got a question?
I forgot.
Also, the R2000... Yeah. Yeah. A lot of... And so... You have some here. You have... I don't think I... I don't think... She... Yeah. I... And I don't think... That's why I was... I think... I don't... I don't... I don't... Sort of like... I don't... I don't... Keep it right there. I... I like... Yeah, so... I'm... I'm... Yeah. 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 And there's some... Yes. So... I would be... Yeah. On that. Yeah. 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 We've been... I'm here. Yeah. Anything on last day? I think...
If we have a new witness, can you state his name for me? If we have a new witness, repeat his name.
Yes. All set?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll call back Mr. Shawn Savage. Mr. Savage, you understand you're still under oath, correct?
Correct.
And your professional credentials are unchanged since the last meeting? You still have your license, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Savage, you had a couple of exhibits, I think, to prepare. Coming out of the last meeting. Why don't you start with the one that Mr. Hadfield referenced a few moments ago?
Okay, so this is an aerial exhibit. Sheet 1 of 1. And this is an overlay of the existing site conditions with the proposed building and parking areas. So as you can see through the back of this here, this... You can see the existing...
Can we zoom in as much as possible? Maybe try and make that full screen?
I don't think you...
Johnny, can you introduce this as a...
Yeah, this will be...
A5.
A5.
And also, can you please send that, after tonight's discussion of it, to...
Yeah, Shawn knew what to send that to me, so I guess... Yeah.
And once again, can I just ask a favor? If you are going to introduce new exhibits at the meeting, can you please send them as far in advance as possible so that we may take a look at them? Review them, so that if we do have any questions, we don't have to come up with them on the fly? That we could actually contemplate them a little bit?
We will, as we can. They're exhibits, so sometimes...
Well, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To the extent we can, we will.
Okay, so I'll zoom in and I'll kind of move around as we go through this. But so right here, obviously, is the existing building. Located underneath and all the existing parking areas, Loop Road, et cetera. What is kind of the dark lines and kind of faded in here on the top is the proposed building. How that sits atop the site. And I'm going to zoom over. One second. What was it?
Some control is...
What is the red line to the...
Property line. Yeah, I just... We... To make that pop. Okay, so... So just to zoom out a little more. So now we're getting to the... Here's the parking deck, which you've seen on other plans. And here's the building portion that's closest to Afterglow now. When you look at this existing building, the existing setback to Afterglow from, you know, this corner here would be the closest, is approximately... And again, this would be to the red line here, which is the property line on Afterglow. Approximately 247 feet. In the proposed conditions, the building, the closest point of that building towards the Afterglow property line is right around 60 foot. The allowable setback is 50. So we are exceeding the allowable setback to Afterglow. But so I think, you know, part of what Jack was explaining earlier, when you're looking from that view, is that, you know, this building, as you can see, the proposed building is down that slope a fair amount. And so that kind of takes away some of that hill that you would be seeing in that, you know, in the existing conditions. So I think that that kind of, you know, that building is now sort of coming down slope. The difference between 247 and about 60. Just... Just to make that a little clearer. So you just see, you know, Afterglow property line along Afterglow sidewalk here. So I think that that kind of gives a perspective when you're looking at that view from, you know, you're getting rid of, you know, all this right here underneath the building, this green area before the parking lot, was part of that slope that you would have seen before.
Now, you're not going to see the slope, which is why it appears flatter.
Yeah, I think that that and a combination of the height of the view kind of tends to flatten a site in terms of that view. But, you know, I think Jack, you know, went through very thoroughly in terms of how this building, you know, when you look at the grades along here, you know, it at the face of the building is generally close to what the existing grade is, and then it kind of steps up into the hill. As you mentioned, and we can, you know, we've been requested and we will provide under step of cover some earthworks caps that would indicate where the most cut is. But as you mentioned, sort of in the middle of that site here is sort of where the largest amount of cut would be.
Okay. Couple of other issues that came up at the last meeting. One was sewer capacity.
Yes.
Does the Verena Sewer Treatment Facility have the capacity to provide sewer gallage for this project?
Yes, we had meetings and some coordination emails with Mike DeCarlo concerning the treatment plant. And our understanding is that the treatment plant right now is running at about 64% of its capacity and it's our understanding.
That wasn't the question that was asked about... The question that was asked was the capacity of the pipes that are in the ground around those streets that will carry the sewerage, the sewerage...
And...
Through the neighborhood. The capacity of the area to handle that new sewer. Not the capacity of our sewage facility. We're talking about the...
Conveyance.
Do you understand what the question is?
And we...
Thank you.
In those meetings and coordination with him, we did discuss conveyance. He didn't know of any conveyance issues in this area. We have, in discussions with him, agreed to inspect the lines that he mentioned, which were along Afterglow and then Afterglow Way, I believe it's called, down here. Further, it's off... It's out of the V port. So we would be looking at, you know, televising those or doing inspection or see if there's any issues in those pipes.
Were some of the pipes...
That you were connecting into as well along After... I'm sorry.
Yes, our connection is on Afterglow.
On... Nothing on Sunset?
No, because you're...
Does it flow downward to Sunset? It would have to, yeah.
No, no.
Where does...
Uphill. No. What happens here, as a joke, sorry. The sanitary that's in Afterglow comes out into the intersection at Sunset and it goes left. And so we have... We... We're given the sanitary sewer maps for town. That area is collected and goes the other way. Obviously, some of the homes that are on Sunset, you know, will go the other way. But this connection point here, the pipe comes out, hits here, and goes that way.
Okay.
So that's... And for our discussion...
Are you going to do a scope of the lines?
He had suggested we do Afterglow. I think it's maybe two runs, you know, manhole, manhole. And then when we get to Afterglow Way, go up Afterglow Way to the... Where the upstream manhole on that road was. So it's those networks that we would investigate.
And so you are going to scope the lines? You're going to...
Yeah, we have agreed to do that. We just... We were coordinating which ones with him.
And you think that the pipe capacity is... Of those existing lines are ample enough to handle the flow from off of the new site? 200 meters?
Yeah, I mean, we believe that those pipes are... Have the adequate capacity there. And also discussions with him that they seem to be no known sort of conveyance issues. That line, I believe, is an eight inch. And, you know, all that will be confirmed. We could confirm, you know, slopes and things like that, condition of the pipes when we do the inspection. And then we could, you know, if we need to provide some sort of calculations or something, we could do that. But, you know, the inspection will kind of help finalize that or firm that up.
Aaron?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly appreciate that you've had the preliminary discussions, but the basis of everything is on what type of sewage you're generating. And we still have not seen that formally. So we still would hold that we want to see the calculations of what this will generate and then can better explain if those lines can accommodate it, so...
Yeah, and we can provide that. We wanted to make that submission. With our next submission would be the sanitary sewer flows. You know, based on the calculations we have done, the proposed flow, we are anticipating to be approximately 38,000 gallons per day would be the flow out of the site. But we'll, you know, firm those calculations up and make a formal submission for everyone to review.
Do you have will serve letters from PSCNG?
We had sent out requests. We... To be honest, a lot of times we don't get responses back from them. It's a... You know, they view them a lot of times as form letters. And then until we're... Like, until they know a project is real, then they start talking to you a lot of times. So... We don't.
Why the reaction, Mr. Savage?
Because I... Getting a will serve letter.
Your will serve letter is going to hire you.
Exactly.
We'll talk. We do get them once in a while, but... But there are no known impediments to receiving adequate gas and electric service for...
There's no known impediments to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Savage, also, you prepared a... You had testimony with regarding the radius for the largest fire truck to turn, correct?
Yeah, so we had met with...
Go ahead.
Sorry, we had met with Matt Gifford, Fire Official's office, actually, twice. And he gave us the dimensions of his largest fire truck, which I believe the outer dimension is 43 foot 8 inch. And then we were able to run that through our truck turning circulation. During that discussion, there was some discussion about, you know, that largest truck and the current circle. That truck having, you know, certainly could pull in here and then back out. That largest truck with the circulation of this circle, there is difficulty in it being able to make that if...
So the largest truck cannot make the turn all the way around the circle, correct?
Correct.
So if a fire truck couldn't make the turn, they were going to go into... And that particular truck was going to go in to fight a fire, what would they have to do?
The truck would pull in here on the entrance drive and then, you know, when the fire's over, whatever's over, they'd back out onto the road.
And if we encroach the circle into the buffer, how far would we have to encroach the circle into the buffer in order for the truck to be able to circulate around the circle?
Right now, we had revised the circle that we now are having right at 30 foot from this curb line here to the property line. If we enlarge that circle back to closer to sort of what we had originally, we would be right at about 14 foot from the property line. And then we would be able to maneuver that larger vehicle through here.
But that would require a variance, correct?
Yes, that would put us about half of the way into that landscape buffer.
So we leave it to the board. I mean, you know, look, we're right now presenting a variance-free application. The testimony from the engineer is that we comply with residential site improvement standards. So there is no need legally for the fire truck to be able to circulate around the circle. That is not a...
Go around the other driveway? What if the fire happens in the electrical...
No, it would be the same scenario... Hold on a second. So in this scenario, and this has... Has always been this way. And in, you know, a couple of times we met with the fire official, you know, they're only, you know, sort of, I guess, they had no comments about getting a truck around this. This would again be the same thing. They could pull in and back out. You know, had this not had a drop-off and just went directly into the garage, they would have had to have just parked and backed out because there would not have been... There is no requirement to provide that on a driveway entrance. So, you know, again, the building has access, you know, Afterglow, Sunset, and is fully sprinkled. And so, you know, this could have just as easily been a straight shot into the garage. And there would have been, from the get-go, no ability to turn around.
So we defer to the board. If you... If the board prioritizes the circulation of the fire truck to be important, then we'd have to get a variance. If that's what you'd like, if you'd like to provide us a variance to encroach into the setback so to accommodate the fire truck, we would obviously agree to amend the plans to do that.
Did Mr. Gifford give you a report of any sort of... Any written anything? Did Mr. Gifford give you anything in writing?
We do have, I believe there was an email. We met with him just... Actually, the most recent meeting was just Tuesday, I believe it was. And we got the response on Wednesday via email.
Yeah, why don't we contact him and ask him what his concerns are? Yeah. Head Scour Board Secretary, this is Neil, to get in touch with him?
All right, because he should make the decision or... Wait, I believe.
Well, the board has to make the decision. But if there's a recommend... The fire company can certainly make a recommendation. If their recommendation is that...
Yeah.
Right, so what we're saying is, is that knowing his recommendation is going to be that he'd like the largest fire truck to be able to get around the circle. In order for us to accommodate that, we would have to encroach into the setback area, which would trigger a variance. We would be willing to make that plan amendment, but you'd have to give us the variance. On the other hand, you could say, "No, we want to prioritize the setback area as not being violated, in which case the fire trucks will have to back out."
I think the board just has to see how important it is to Mr. Gifford.
Right, so all I'm saying is, you tell us which way you want to go and we'll accommodate you.
Are you sprinkling the building to NFPA 13 or 13R?
NFPA 13.
13, okay.
That was Jack Reeder answering.
Thank you. And the difference being, correct me if I'm wrong, NFPA 13R is the less restrictive standard for fire sprinklers that doesn't require you to sprinkle void spaces, whereas NFPA 13 does require you to sprinkle void spaces. Am I correct?
That's correct. 13R is what the code requires. My client, by standard practice, sprinklers 13.
Okay, thanks.
It's over the butt. It's over the butt.
Okay, that's bad.
And it is correct. Interstitial spaces are required to be protected.
Thank you.
Can you provide some testimonies of what the maximum length vehicle can make that turn?
We had... The previous plan we had submitted to... I actually went to, I believe, the engineer. I don't think it made it to the board. But we had done the plan. I might... Let's see if I have it here. Yeah, I think this is it. No, that's not it. No, that's the one in there. So basically, we had originally done a plan that had a fire truck, which was just over 40 foot long, so...
Do you have... Did you do a schematic of the turning?
Well, yeah, I mean, this is... What's here is the one that is... Well, yeah, I mean, this is, what's here is the one that is.
Let me ask it a different way. Can a 26 foot box truck make that turn?
Yeah, yeah. This down here, so here is, this is a UPS truck and the dimension is that.
UPS trucks are generally shorter than 26 feet.
25 feet. But yes, and again, we also ran through that, that configuration there. We ran a fire truck that was just over, I think it was 40.8, and the new one was 43.8. But it was a 40 foot fire truck couldn't, can make that, that circle.
And they can make it in the service, service circle as well?
No, we've never had, we've never proposed fire access to this.
I know, but what about delivery trucks? So if someone's getting furniture, it's going to show up in a 26 foot box truck?
We ran like the smaller box truck through that, that lower area.
Do you know where your FDC location is going to be?
Sorry, excuse me?
Do you know where your sprinkler FDC location is going to be?
Sorry. Typically, we work with the fire department to locate it. And we do NOx boxes, FDC connections in various points in the building. We work with the fire department to locate those items. So, you know, it's generally don't locate them now. We work with them, meet with them during our construction document process to work through any of the items that they're, their concerns, any of the things they want, like NOx boxes and connections.
Right. The only reason I ask is it sounds like if, if the only piece of fire, if they're fighting a fire, they're the only piece of fire apparatus they're going to want to bring in is the ladder truck. They're going to have to put the engines on the street probably. I don't, you know, depending on what gets there first. So I'm trying to think of how they'd access the FDC if the ladder got there first, for example, and pulled into the driveway. So.
Like, again, I, we work with the fire department.
Okay.
They would look at some sort of staging plan and we would locate FDC connections as they see fit.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find the original truck turning plan here. All right, I think not. But we, we had submitted one, again, I don't think it ultimately made to the whole board, but we did, we do have one that's prepared that does have a UPS truck.
We need this, okay? When you submit something, could you please also send it to the board secretary so that the board gets a chance to look at it? Because after all, we need to see, when you submit something, we need to see it too. It's kind of incredulous that we're not receiving the documents.
These are, these are just prepared as exhibits for this hearing, so they, it was not the time to have submitted those prior to the hearing. I understand now. We will submit it. So we'll submit, we'll show that truck, but we did, we did run that lower parking. We did run a truck that was like a box truck that would run through there. That's the size that per the, per the owner is what they would expect that their normal for this type of a building. We'll provide that.
I will add that I don't want to see more driveway. That is my personal preference. I feel like there's already a lot of pavement at the front of that building with the two different driveways. And if you continue to expand that driveway towards the street, it's just going to be like a narrow strip of hedges or something between the houses. Now that area has, has ample trees, you know, according to.
We defer, we defer to the board.
I'm sorry?
We defer to the board.
Well, we need to hear what our fire department.
Understood.
Says.
Ma'am Chair.
Sure.
The, the original set of plans actually did show that circle encroaching into the buffer area and the council specifically was not interested in that, which is why it got altered. So I agree that we do need to see some sort of recommendation from the fire chief.
We need, we obviously need to see that and speak with him.
We understand. You'll tell us. I understand you need to confirm with the fire chief.
But my preference is to somehow not lose the area where trees could be planted to buffer the building from the, the street, the neighboring properties, their second story windows, et cetera.
Understandable. Okay. I think that's all you had, right, Mr. Savage? We, we can go through the letters if you'd like.
Sure.
Yes. This is a letter dated July 11th, 2022 from Tom Jacobson, who is Verona's construction official. And in this, he discusses basically the architectural plans. And then he proposes a list of 27 requirements.
So just go through.
Mr. Inglesino, you want to read?
Yeah, yeah. Number one, number one will comply.
Is this already?
This is part of the record. These reports were generated a long time ago.
We've introduced this already?
Is this?
Well, it's a board report.
Did we introduce this as an exhibit in the beginning?
No.
Okay, then we're going to do, what's the board's next number?
I don't believe.
I think it's B1.
This will be B1 then?
No, I don't think we've done any.
Okay, that's B1.
Thank you.
Yeah, so number one will comply. Number. Well, number two is, is handicap requirements.
We should be reading these out loud, correct?
You want me to read each question?
I think, yes.
I mean, this is all resolution. I'll do what you want to do. So number one says, all dwelling units are required to be handicapped adaptable under the uniform construction code, barrier free parking, exterior routes and common use facilities are required to be handicapped accessible in accordance with ADA barrier free code. We agree, we'll comply. It's a requirement.
You can give us an option if you wish.
Okay. Code requirements, where there's comments from the construction code official relating to code requirements, our comment is going to say be, yes, we comply. So number two also relates, well, number two says that per municipal ordinance, so we'll comply, waste, recycling, loading, et cetera, shall occur on the premises and will not interfere with the normal municipal sidewalk and street operations. We'll comply. Number three, that you want a testimony regarding installation of the gas barbecues, exterior fireplaces, fountains and water features, which we did at length at the last meeting. Those have emergency shut offs, right?
I don't remember hearing anything about that.
That's correct. We did, we did discuss the fire. We did discuss the locations of grills. I believe that the code officials are interested whether they have a timer or have a gas shut off. They will comply with code.
So there'll be a gas shut off and they will have timers.
Correct.
Okay. Number four, that we would provide testimony on whether energy related improvements such as interior natural gas fireplaces or stoves, energy generators, solar panels or other alternatives. This is the sort of lead, more efficient energy kind of a comment. This can affect capacity of site natural gas utilities in the case of fireplace stoves or emergency generators or the structural design capacity for the roofs and supporting so solar panels. We did testify that we will not be doing solar panels and can't be doing solar panels on the roof. There was testimony with regard to appliances. In fact, that testimony occurred this evening in response to a question regarding lead. There will be a generator. We've indicated in the plans where that generator will be. And we'll provide some additional materials on that as was requested by the board tonight. Applicant will address site vehicular circulation for both day to day use and emergency situations. Turning radius for the fire trucks must be addressed. I think we did that tonight and that'll be part of an ongoing conversation.
Quick question. Are you going to submit any of the documents that were introduced as exhibits?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll send the exhibits over to Ashley so it'll be part of the record.
Thank you.
They're marked, they're marked as exhibits, they'll be part of the record.
If we could request the turning movement, one, three copies yesterday if possible, but as soon as possible would be good because we intend to meet with the police next week.
Okay. That will refer to testimony regarding new fencing, if applicable. We said we replace the fencing, the style of fencing, headlight glare, which we discussed tonight from residents' cars shining on adjacent properties from parking spaces, the decks, and the driveways will be discussed. We did that between the last meeting and this meeting. Next comment was the swimming pool fencing and gates must comply with the International Building Code, New Jersey edition. Yes, we'll comply with all the codes. Number eight is that we provide testimony regarding the pool operation and the backwash drainage details to be approved by the township of Verona engineer. Mr. Schwartz is going to address that in his operations testimony. Number nine was testimony regarding the rooftop and ground HVAC units, as well as screening were applicable. That testimony happened at the last meeting and it would be rooftop with all of the screening as was testified to by Mr. Raker.
Excuse me, just briefly, did we actually hear testimony relating to screening of the units? I know we talked about the location of the units, if they're going to be less than the parapet height or otherwise screened. I just don't know if you had a specific comment.
I believe we did, but Mr. Raker's here to reiterate.
Sorry.
Right. None of the units will be visible if we find that's one unit as it's placed in construction is, happens to be in the situation where it is or may be visible from somewhere, we will screen it.
We understand we have to secure our Essex County approval from the Essex County Planning Board. That application is pending. We have to provide testimony on the proper screening of the dumpster area, which I think we did. You can hear more if you'd like.
Dumpster?
There are no dumpsters.
Exactly. So.
Trick question.
Yeah, you failed too. You went right with it.
It's a dumpster area. Applicant provide testimony on proposed landscape design and landscape lighting. Again, you know, landscape design and lighting, we will do that at a later date. We bring in the landscape architect. Parking decks, overhead lighting design will be approved by the engineer and be designed so operate as to not reflect or shine on adjacent properties. I think we talked about that tonight at some length. Parking spaces, this is 14, it's parking spaces right of ways shall be clearly marked. Yes, we agree to that. 15 is that the fire marshal will determine the NOx boxes, where they're installed on the building, a specific location. We indicated that we would agree to that. Testimony on the fire lanes, there are no fire lanes in connection with this residential project. 17 is that we have to obtain all required permits from.
Can I just stop you for quick? Are you saying that fire lanes are just not required on a residential building?
No, they're not required.
A 200 unit, four story, five story, six, nothing? I'm just asking because that doesn't sound right. This is, there are fire lanes outside of a lot of residential buildings.
Let me, let me bring up our expert.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Access around the building is regulated by the building code. And the building code, if, if access is limited around the building, I'm required to create a greater level of fire protection and fire safety within the building. So you know, there are many buildings, especially in town, that don't have, may only have a very small amount of frontage. And if they're designed with a very small amount of frontage on the street and they don't have further, because they're adjacent to maybe two other buildings on the side and there's no rear yard, they're required to provide us a more fire protection within the building. And that's how the building code handles that. They understand that access around all sides of the building is not realistic. And it just, it's, it's accommodated within the building code.
So, so.
But we.
The fire lane is not required. Is that what you're saying?
It's not required around our building, no. No, no. Around this particular building, it is not required.
Residential doesn't matter. It's the way this building is designed because you have the other equipment in place.
Correct.
And Mr. Savage, just to get on the record, the residential site improvements regulations do not require fire lanes either, correct?
Yeah, they, they don't require. They do discuss the sizes of a fire lane if it's provided to 20 foot wide or 18 foot wide.
Well, my question was whether or not it's required under RSIS.
Yeah.
That's all I was asking. Okay, thank you. The applicant must provide, must obtain permits from Verona Essex County Hudson Soil Conservation District and NJDEP as applicable. Yes, we will comply. Stormwater, 18, again, will be reviewed at a later date. Electric vehicles, we've already stipulated that we would comply with the statute on that. The retaining walls, 48 inches and higher must have a construction permit with design calculations signed and sealed by a New Jersey licensed architect and structural engineer. Yes, we'll comply with that. The applicant must provide testimony regarding COA fees as part of the township's ordinance. That's not applicable. All building and ground signage must conform with, to the zoning regulations of the township of Verona. Yes, we've agreed to that and we went through testimony tonight regarding the signage. We have to secure demolition permits from the building department before the demolition of the buildings. Yes, of course, we'll do that. Testimony regarding fire protection between the, between the dwelling units on the exterior balconies. Mr. Raker wants to do that very quickly.
Dwelling in this bubble, one hour separation. Dwelling in this bubble, one hour separation as required by code. And then balconies are not actually adjacent to one another in this building. They're actually internal to the unit and not adjacent to each other. So there's no protection required between those balconies.
Comment about Verona's steep slope ordinance must be addressed with the township of Verona engineer. That was addressed in the.
Basically by not having to comply with it, right?
It was addressed in the redevelopment plan.
It was taken out of the ordinance.
The applicant, next number is the applicant must consult with Verona Rescue Squad to obtain the minimum size required for the elevated compartments to accommodate stretchers. We did that, we're complying with, with code that's regulated by the building code. We agree to do that. And lastly, the Verona Building Department reserves the right to require special inspections and documentations from licensed professionals during construction. As per the construction code, yes, of course, we'll agree to that. I'm sure that will be a developer's agreement. So those are comments regarding the construction code official. There was also a review letter issued by Brightview Engineering dated August 16th of 2022. I guess that would be B2.
So which section do you want to address this evening?
Well, let's address the ones that we've, we've kind of addressed already.
Utilities? I don't even know.
With regard to, with regard to the site plan, we will provide the borrow fill calcs, which don't have them quite yet. Based upon that, that will provide our ability to address number two. Number three says a portal wall is being proposed along the south side of development. Additional information on the wall needs to be provided so the height can be better understood. To the extent we haven't done that, we will. Stormwater will be deferred. Utilities.
Also deferred, I would assume.
Well, no, some of the utilities. So again, my question of, of Mr. Savage was from number 17 on utilities, which we address regarding sewer flows. We confirmed that only one sewer connection will be required. That was done.
Mr. Inglesino, maybe we should just lump all the utilities into Mr. Savage's section once he gets to.
I think we've addressed all of these. This is my point is, we've, we've addressed the calculations supporting the water demand for the proposed units will be provided. We talked about the will serve letters, I wish we could get them.
Okay, you're addressing what we discussed, but not actually a comparison of existing versus proposed sanitary sewer flows should be provided. You're, you're saying I agree, but it hasn't been provided as yet.
We're going, a comparison of existing versus proposed sanitary sewer flows. Mr. Savage is going to provide the sewer flow information to your engineer. We've indicated that we would do that. So that's, that's the comment. We will confirm that only one sewer connection will be required. I think we already confirmed that, correct?
Correct. The pipe capacity calculations will be required to confirm that the lateral was size will accommodate the anticipated demand. We indicated we would do that.
The applicant shall confirm that the. Um, the applicant shall confirm that the existing sanitary sewer lateral will be capped and abandoned, and if it does, notes and details will be added to the plans. We will do that. Uh, a comparison of the existing versus proposed water demand should be, will be provided. We will do that. Um, and, uh, also that, uh, the water, uh, demand can be accommodated by the township. Will serve, will, will serve letters, we'll make an attempt, we can't promise, and the calculation supporting the water demand for the proposed units will be provided.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, you know, for the items that you were saying will be provided, are you saying that you will provide them prior to this board completing its site plan review or prior to applying for a building permit?
Uh, I believe these can all be done prior to site plan. Is that correct, Sean?
Um, yeah, I, I would say they, they can be. I mean, they're, um, I got a few real quick.
That's a good point, Mayor. If there's, uh, we will get back to you if there's any of these things that we would need as a condition of approval. But it looks to me anyway, Sean can confirm that most, if not all, this stuff can be provided for review prior to, uh, the ending of the application.
Okay.
Okay. Um, site operations and maintenance, uh, you'll hear from Mr. Schwartz in a moment. Um, traffic, parking and circulation, we will defer until after, uh, traffic and same with landscaping and, uh, lighting plan will defer until after our last gate parking.
Um, I'm just, I'm.
Thank you for going through that. We'll, we'll continue relying upon B2 as we get through further and further through the site plan. But I do want to point out it's almost 10:30. To, you want to bring another, um.
I think Mr. Schwartz's testimony is going to be short, but it's just, it's answering a couple of questions that were posed.
But before I do that, I have to open to the public to ask, um, the, if there were any questions about the two exhibits that were put up by Mr. Savage.
That's correct.
So I, you know, so right now, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Savage based on the two exhibits that he put up on the screen and discussed, please, and, uh, approach the mic, the, really only about his testimony about those two or three and the discussion of the, uh, fire truck not being able to make its way around, please approach the mic, um, and state your name and address for the record if you have any questions for Mr. Savage.
Hi, Jonathan Mapperoe, 76 Sunset Avenue. Um, is this the appropriate time to ask questions about the sewage line that you brought up?
No, because we haven't studied it yet.
Okay. I'll have questions, please.
Thanks.
Brian Comrie, 24 Sunset Avenue of Verona. Um, question about your circulation plan with the, the fire truck along the front of the property. There, there is a tree there and I know your landscape architect is in there. I believe that tree is staying, correct? So if you approach further into Sunset Avenue, that tree would have to be removed?
Uh, there are, there are existing trees there that would be impacted by that change, yes.
So to accommodate, I guess, the, the fire, the fire truck, I'm sure the architect could, could come up with some better alternative to push this, uh, donut-shaped driveway into the building, around the building, you have like a covering or something, and reconfigure some of the units to be more appropriate, you know, for the residences.
Yeah.
Try to push it out and hesitate, you know, the, the conditions.
Mr. Raker, Mr. Raker can answer that. I can tell you that there is no fireman that would ever drive a truck in or under a building that is on fire. So there's no way to take, even if I provided a turning radius under the building, they wouldn't do it. They'd just back out.
Is there any consideration to move that driveway further and create that, you know, condition where you're further away? That tree, I guess in question I'm asking, it's in state, has roots, generally the roots of the canopy of the tree relatively close to that tree? Just wondering, you know, how you're going to construct your wall without damaging the existing, uh, you know, vegetation now that you're trying to get closer to the roadway? Just the only.
Just to clarify, we, we, um, the suggestion to go closer to the road was from, you know, from the fire department, not, not our proposal. And as we mentioned before, the board's going to, you know, speak to him and, and we'll take direction from the board regarding that. We, we have it where it's located, which is at the required setback, and that's where we would prefer to keep it.
But you don't have a document from the fire official? Did he officially say to move the?
As, as we said before, it, it, there was a testimony that they had at meeting just a couple of days ago. Uh, and I think there was, uh, testimony that there may have been an email or something that confirmed what the fire, uh, chief was asking for. Um, but as was indicated, uh, the board is going to take up that conversation with him and they'll tell us what they want to do. Not sure what else.
Has that documentation been raised to the board?
There's no, there's no documentation, there's no documentation provided. The fire chief will, uh, decide to issue a public report on this, on this or not, but the board will, will solicit the fire chief and, and get his, uh, his view.
So if the fire truck's not required to make a total turn, is there a way you can reduce that donut? Do you need to have a rotary around, you know? Can, can you get that driveway, you know, further away from, from Sunset?
The testimony was no and, and, and comply with the setback ordinance. What we wanted to be able to do was to get box truck, Federal Express trucks, et cetera, to be able to enter and circulate around the driveway. So we were able to do that and, and respect the, uh, the bulk criteria imposed by the redevelopment plan, and that's what we're proposing.
So as far as that tree being preserved, has that been looked into?
Don't, don't know. Don't, don't know. Not a requirement.
But if you construct, you're going to damage the tree and the tree's going to come down. Like that tree today, since it's right across the street from my house and provides nice coverage.
I don't know whether a, a particular tree.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that particular tree and, and if you're talking about on the expanded loop or the term.
Directly across from the loop, directly across from my house.
No, I understand, but I'm, what I'm getting at is, is, you know, we're, in our current plan, we're, we're, um, respecting that 30-foot buffer. And so if there's a, if that tree is within, within that 30-foot buffer, you know, obviously there'd be some space. We're allowed to put that curb basically right up to that 30-foot buffer. And so, you know, we'll, they'll take all, um, precautions to try to save that tree, but if it's, you know, right on that 30-foot buffer or something, then, you know, that might have to be removed. So we're, we're, we are preserving in our plan that buffer.
All right, so you're intending to, to hold that buffer and, in, in an attempt to save the tree, would you look into other alternatives like silversales or something that the landscape architect could provide to allow roots to grow appropriately under that driveway, not damage it?
I, I would defer that to the landscape architect. We can certainly bring that up with them.
Um, again, I guess these plans will be provided?
These are not, these exhibits will, will be provided to Ash.
And I guess those exhibits will be posted on?
Posted on the website, yes. Everything we get goes to the website.
Right.
Yes. When we get it, if we get it.
Yeah, I was just looking for way, we talked about driveway being a two-way driveway. You said it's a one-way driveway and why it's so wide. I think testimony in the last hearing was to provide these drawings to show why it would need to be so wide, but I don't get an indication if it's intended for, uh, certain vehicle. You're not showing information why it would need to be that wide for a certain vehicle.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that, that's going to be the Trump.
That, that, I mean, we're, what we're.
Have the width of the one-way driveway be twenty-four foot wide? It's a really approach against Sunset.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Schwartz can explain.
I'm sorry?
When Mr. Schwartz testifies, he can.
It's going to probably be.
Provide an answer to that question.
Yeah.
So the answer will be later, later on?
The answer as to, as to, as to why, uh, the applicant has shown the driveway the way it is shown the driveway will be addressed by Mr. Schwartz.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Hi, Maria Scolanti, Six Bell Prep, thanks. We're Six Bell Claire, please. Um, I guess my question is regarding the fire prevention. And I'm, I'm very uneasy about the fire chief.
Question is, um, to the board, if you have a question, it's based on what we were just testing.
So I'm a little concerned with fire because we've seen buildings built recently in this style, um, that constructed and where they go up very quickly and we, that's just a fact all over the country. Um, and the fact that the fire truck cannot access the other side of the building, like, I would like to know from the, the town side and then from your side, like, what precautions are going to be taken? And I'd like the fire chief to put it in writing that he's blessing this thing and saying, no, it's going to be good if we put the fire out. Or, no, we cannot put the fire out. The apartments, uh, and the entire side of the building over by overlook will have to burn down and potentially spread to the rest of the neighborhood, and that's just the risk we have to take. Like, I would like some resolution on that, um, because my house isn't there, but certainly that's a lot of the neighborhood's thinking.
So legally, um, fire suppression is regulated by the New Jersey State Construction Code, the building code. Um, you heard testimony from the applicant that it is installing a sprinkler system that exceeds the minimum requirements of, of the code. Um, by the way, the code preempts local action of, of planning boards. In other words, when the code regulates an area, the planning board does not have the power to regulate in that area, cannot impose a more stringent requirement than what the construction code requires, uh, with regard to construction codes matters. Um, with regard to the access around the building, um, the applicant is proposing a building in accordance with the redevelopment plan, which was negotiated at, uh, at length between the applicant, the township, the township's professionals, presumably the township included its fire and other, uh, emergency rescue, uh, personnel in, in the creation of the redevelopment plan. This board's, uh, job is to ensure that our site plan meets the requirements of the redevelopment plan, which we are presenting that it does, among, which we're presenting that it does.
Are there any other questions from any other members of the public?
Yeah, hi, Bill Hatfield, again, 14 April Avenue, Verona. I just have some questions to pull up the, um, overlay figure. Thank you for preparing that, I think that was very helpful. Um, as part of your preparation for the overlay figure, did, did you prepare calculations on the amount of earth and residual wool, uh, material in the areas for the construction?
We've indicated that's an open issue that we're going to provide that information to the, uh, board engineer.
And with respect to square footage, um, of areas that are now going to be covered with structures or, um, asphalt or other landscape?
Yeah, I mean, those are all on the, um, in the bulk table, um, under the lock coverage. In terms of just the building, which I think was the request last time, the, um, the footprint of this proposed building inclusive of the garage area and everything, now this is building, not the patio areas, is approximately like 102,000 square feet. The existing building here i- is actually down in the range of 16 and a half, 17, I think, somewhere in that range. So, so, and then the rest of the site is all paved areas, which is, you know, would be considered dirty and perfect. So there, there is a, you know, the new building footprint, you know, is a, you know, is, is clearly from this exhibit, a, a much larger footprint in terms of the building.
So the comparison of the current school building or building structures and the proposed structures is about six times the coverage? You're going 16,000 to over 100,000?
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to answer the questions, but, um, I, I mean, I, I guess we've been at this for a while and we're trying to move the application along, and we're happy to provide the information to you, um, but I, I'm not sure what the relevance is, uh, to.
Let me get to what is getting asked.
Yeah.
Asking and conversing, so.
Yeah, I only have a few questions. Um, and with respect to the non, um, building structures, the other surfaces, the coverage for your patios, your turnaround, your, your roadways and other features, what's the difference between what's on the site now and what you're proposing?
I, I mean, again, I, we could provide a calculation, but I'm not sure, it doesn't have any relevance to the application. There's no relevance to the question, to the application. Our job is to comply with what the standards are.
We understand that. This is a, a resident in town, he's asking a, a, a question that I think your engineer could really answer.
We'll, we'll answer, we'll, if he has the answer, we'll provide. I'm just saying that.
It looks like he's calculating it, so.
I, I could tell you that their stormwater management report from last time said that they added about an acre of new impervious surface on, onto the entire site.
I can, just, so, so, um, the, the improved lock coverage and, and if we want to look at, um, if we want to focus on, on the Verona piece of the property.
Yes.
The, the allowable, I should say, is 75% lock coverage. That's per the redevelopment plan. If you look at only the Verona side, we're at 60%. So we're well under what we're permitted. I mean, we could go another 15%.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. When you ran the calculations, you're only including the Verona.
Well, I ran both ways. I mean, if you want to look at the lock coverage for the full site, again, we're still allowed 75 because it's one track. The proposed, when you look at the full site, we're only at 40.6%.
And are all the proposed new structures or new coverage, that's all on the Verona track?
Are, all of our development, other than some minor grading, is on the Verona property?
And has there been an application for whatever you're doing on the Montclair side?
We don't have an application. This is, there's nothing to do with Montclair. The improvements are on the Verona side and we're only here to discuss Verona.
No, I understand that you're seeking.
We, we will do whatever's required of us to do, but we're not going to answer questions about Montclair.
Are there any hearings or other applications planned at Montclair under the amount?
No.
At this time?
No.
Have there been any submissions to Montclair about stormwater drainage or blasting?
I, I mean, the, the answer is no, but again, these questions are, are happy to answer the questions. We can sit here until 2 o'clock in the morning. I, I, I'm happy to do that, but these questions are completely irrelevant to this application.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if you're annoyed by my questions.
I'm not annoyed, I'm just.
Are there any relevant to your application?
They're not.
Okay.
They're not relevant. Legally, they are completely irrelevant. The board, the board chair can answer whether they are or aren't.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that they're irrelevant. I, I.
Whether we submitted anything to Montclair is irrelevant to this board's application before this board.
That's not true because whether you submitted something to Montclair would indicate the possibility that you plan to pay in more area on the site because that's an uphill trajectory and more stormwater runoff would occur into Verona. So it is a relevant question and I don't see, I don't think we are trying to waste the applicant's time. I think they have genuine concerns and I think what's wasting time is just kind of giving them Wittenheimer answers, like, we don't need to answer that. Just answer and then we'll get through it and then we can move forward. I mean, I, I don't think we need to have, you know.
I'll just ask one.
Bad taste in our mouth at the end of every single one of these meetings. I'd rather just get through them and try to be kind.
Thank you. Let me, let me just ask one final question. So the applicant's position is there's nothing contingent on this project for, uh, construction that you're waiting on for Montclair? You don't think there's anything relevant with respect to Montclair?
I, I, um, the answer is no, but we're not answering questions with regard to Montclair. I mean, we're just not because we're not before the Montclair, we're not before a Montclair board.
Mr. Hatfield, I think the board understands your concern and somebody, somebody will get an answer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand there's property lines and there's a, there's, there's issues with respect to coverage and calculations. This is right on the Montclair boundary and it's partly in Montclair and those properties will be impacted during construction, just like power outage, so with that, thanks.
Are there any other comments or questions, not really comments, but questions from anybody in the public? in the public? Any follow-up from the board? Okay, seeing none, we're closing the public participation portion for this evening, and I believe that we should carry this meeting with your approval to our December 1st meeting. What do you expect to discuss at the December 1st meeting?
Well, we had planned to get farther along in this meeting. So, you know, here, I guess, we have our architect and our engineer coming back again.
And operations?
They will be brief. Mr. Schwartz will testify as to operations. Then we have Mr. Savage, I'm sorry, Mr. Sekler with regard to traffic.
Okay.
And that's before we even get to stormwater and landscape architecture.
That will probably happen until January.
Right, no, I understand, and I mean, listen, we are all cognizant, obviously, of the time of year that it is, and December 1st is fine, and we understand what December is. But once we get to January, at some point, we're going to start requesting special meetings to get through what we need to get through. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, make you aware that we're not requesting a special meeting right now because we're cognizant of the time of year, et cetera.
I mean, are your plans done?
So.
Is your stormwater management plan done? Is your, are your new site plans done? Are the new landscape architect plans done? No. So special meeting to review something that we can't review at this very moment?
I'm not asking for a special meeting right now. I'm giving you sort of a heads up that as we get into the next year, you know, we may be requesting special meetings, not requesting it right now.
Fantastic, can't wait. All right. We'll give it our best shot to get through as much as we can. We may have another item on the agenda that night. We don't know yet, but it's also part of our affordable housing, and it may be a revision. We're going to do our best job.
So we would request that you give us a period of time?
Oh, yeah, of course.
That we will, no, no.
You would be first on the agenda.
And how long would we get? In other words, I'm trying to understand how long we have because we have.
Can we, I'm asking our board secretary, Mrs. Neal, if we can just confirm as to whether or not they want to defer to another meeting or whether they need to get this done by the end of this year? If we could, and then she will get in touch with you to let you know.
If Ashley could just let me know how much time we have on the first.
It will not be, by my understanding, I spoke to the applicant's counsel, it's a revision of a site plan. I can't see that it would be more than an hour, even with this board.
That's a compliment.
No.
I wear a badge of honor on that.
Yeah, no, I really.
We'd have the first two hours?
I would, I can't see that it would be more than an hour.
Fine.
You're not going to get through it all in one meeting anyway. So, you know.
But we have to gauge who we're bringing and so forth.
So we have your permission to carry to December 1?
Yes, you absolutely have the, to the extent, the extension is required, you have our consent, and just for the record, this meeting is being carried without further notice to the public.
That's right.
So the public knows, the notice they're getting of the meeting is December 1 is right here now, tonight. They will not be receiving any other notice from the applicant or otherwise, and we'll see you all December 1 in this room at 7:30.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can I get a, are there any further comments or any, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right.
Aye. Thank you.